Thursday, July 28, 2022. My name is Charlie Bryant. I am the Community Development Director of the City of Emeryville and the Secretary of the Emeryville Planning Commission. You may be wondering why I am convening this meeting. Our incumbent Chair and Vice Chair from last year have both elected not to seek reappointment to the Commission, so they are no longer on the Commission. So we are currently without a Chair and a Vice Chair. In that situation, it's been our practice for the Planning Commission Secretary to convene the meeting and to preside until new officers are elected. Election of officers is scheduled to occur very shortly, right after the swearing in of our new Commissioners, and at that point, I will hand over the proverbial gavel to the new officers. But for right now, the first order of business is the roll call. And new Commissioners, you should also participate in the roll call, even though you haven't been sworn in yet. Commissioner Chafe has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Dram?
Here.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Here.
Commissioner Henme?
Here.
Commissioner Mora? Commissioner Mora?
Muted, but still here.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Simons?
Here.
And Commissioner Wax?
Here.
We have a quorum of six Commissioners present. At this time, I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to newly enacted California Assembly Bill 361. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the Governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus, and which expired on September 30, 2022. This new bill gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1, 2024, as long as California is under a Governor-declared state of emergency. In order to continue meetings subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission must make findings by majority vote no later than 30 days after it starts using the exemption, and every 30 days thereafter, and will do so at this meeting and until the Governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular hours, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The planning and building counter has different hours, so please check or make an appointment before visiting. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting, that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27, and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment forum can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville Planning Commission webpage and clicking on the link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the "Raise Your Hand" feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9 on your phone. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as via e-notification and on social media. The resolution declaring the need for the Planning Commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public, containing the required findings, is item 3.5 on tonight's agenda, which we will get to shortly. But first, we have the swearing in of our new Planning Commissioners, Rod Henme, David Mora, and Jordan Wax, and our City Clerk, Sherry Harts, will do the honors. At this time, I will turn it over to you, Sherry.
Thank you, Charlie. Good evening, Planning Commission. At this time, if I could have New Commissioners Rod Henme, David Mora, and Jordan Wax repeat after me. I'm going to start off by stating each of your names in alphabetical order at the beginning of the oath, so after I say your name, if you could follow by saying your name. And while you take the oath, please raise your right hand.
Raise your hand. Very good.
Raise your hand. Hands up. And we'll begin. I, Rod Henme...
Rod Henme.
David Mora...
David Mora.
And Jordan Wax...
Jordan Wax.
Do solemnly swear... And then you can repeat after me as I finish each phrase. Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution...
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter...
On which I am about to enter.
To enter.
As a Planning Commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
As a Planning Commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
Thank you very much, and you will each receive a docu-sign for you to go ahead and sign your oath for the file. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Commissioners Henme, Mora, and Wax.
Congratulations.
Come on board.
All right, you're now official. Thank you, Sherry. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want.
Gosh, I wish I could.
I sure you did.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Sherry. Thank you. All right, now that we have a full complement of seven Planning Commissioners, our next item is a sixth present tonight. Our next item is the election of officers. Last week, when I sent you the email with a link to the agenda, I noted that Commissioner Chafe has an excused absence this evening, although she did indicate to me that she would be willing to be elected in absentia if that is what the Commission wishes to do. So with that in mind, I would, at this point, like to call for a nomination for Chair and Vice Chair. Commissioners Simons?
Hi, Charlie. I'd love to nominate Commissioner Chafe for Chair and myself as Vice Chair.
All right, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Let's see, I'm gonna pick Commissioner Dram. He's the first one I heard. All right. Are there any other nominations for Chair and/or Vice Chair? See, none. We will now take a roll call vote on the election of Commissioner Chafe as Chair and the end of Commissioner Simons as Vice Chair. Commissioner Chafe has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Six ayes. Congratulations to our new Chair and Vice Chair. And Vice Chair Simons, that means that you are in charge of the rest of this meeting. I'm not sure if you were expecting that. It may be a bit daunting, so if you need any help, Kristi and I are ready and willing to assist you in any way that we can.
Thank you so much. I will definitely need some help and advice from you two. So, yeah, thank you. Let's do this.
Right. Okay. So, at this point, the Vice Chair would read the next agenda item.
Okay, happy to do that. So our next agenda item is recognition of former Commissioners Erica Mendez and Stephen Keller.
And I am going to promote them both to the panel, so you can see them and they can see you. There you go, here you go. All right, a couple of familiar faces here.
Hey, Charlie.
Hi, Erica. How are you?
Good.
Good evening. Good evening.
I'm going to bring up, let's see, bear with me a second. Okay. And we have Stephen. Is Stephen here somewhere? There he is! You're lost in my Zoom matrix. Good to see you.
Thank you.
So, Vice Chair Simons, with your permission, I have a resolution for each of them, which I would like to go ahead and read.
That would be great. Thanks so much, Charlie.
Sure. I'm gonna share my screen, because these are kinda long, and I think it helps if people can see what I'm reading. So let me just bring this up here. All righty, can everybody see that? Yes. All right, Erica, you ready to get roasted? This is Resolution CPC Number EM22-01, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville, expressing the Commission's sincere appreciation to Erica Mendez for her service on the Emeryville Planning Commission. Whereas on March 3, 2020, the City Council appointed Erica Mendez to serve on the Emeryville Planning Commission for a term commencing immediately and ending on June 30, 2022, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Linda Barrera, who had moved out of Emeryville. And whereas Erica did not seek reappointment to the Commission in 2022 because she is now planning to move out of Emeryville herself, and whereas Erica served as Vice Chair of the Commission from July 2021 to June 2022, and whereas during Erica's term on the Commission, several major development projects were approved by the Commission, including the final development plan for the adaptive reuse of existing Building 131 in the Sherwin-Williams Mixed-Use Project, the Bay Street Grocery Store, the Emeryville Center for the Arts, the final development plan for the Biomed Emeryville Center of Innovation, and the Emery Station Overland Research and Development Project. And study sessions were held on the Nellie Hanan Gateway Affordable Housing Project, Emeryville's first SB 35 project, the 4300 San Pablo Intergenerational Affordable Housing Project, Emeryville's second SB 35 project, I'm gonna delete that second semicolon there, the 5850 Shell Life Sciences Tower, the Bay Center Life Science Building, the Marketplace Parcels A and B Research and Development Proposal, and the Christie Avenue Mixed-Use Project, and Erica played an active role in the deliberations on these and several other projects. And whereas during Erica's term on the Commission, a number of long-range planning efforts were reviewed and/or recommended for approval by the Commission and adopted by the City Council, including regulations for accessory dwelling units, birth safe building standards, development bonus points for mass timber construction, the 2023 to 2031 housing element, the Active Transportation Plan, the Objective Development Standards, and Erica played an active role in the deliberations of all of these efforts. And whereas Erica brought speed to the Commission with her clear and to-the-point comments, and whereas at each Commission meeting, Erica amused, entertained, and educated us with a different Zoom background, featuring one of her favorite architectural masterpieces, and whereas during Erica's term on the Commission, she provided valuable insight and a positive attitude that helped everyone on the Commission in reaching good decisions. She had a professional perspective that helped make many projects better, using her experience and commitment to detail. It was our hope, our great hope, that she would become the next Chair, but we all hope for the best for her in her new life adventure and her new city. And whereas Erica's thoughtful and insightful comments and wisdom on a variety of long-range and current planning issues will be greatly missed, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Erica Mendez for her service to the City of Emeryville and its citizens, and wishes her the best of luck in all of her future endeavors, approved by the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held on Thursday, July 28, 2022, and signed by all of the Commissioners and staff. And Erica will be sent a suitably framed copy of this resolution.
Thank you, Charlie. I really do appreciate it. I just have a couple of seconds. I just wanna show my appreciation for everyone on the staff. Everyone was really helpful, and it made this experience a really great experience. So I just wanna thank everyone for giving me the opportunity and entrusting me to serve as a Planning Commissioner. I really enjoyed my time here, but I honestly mostly really enjoyed the other Commissioners. So I'm confident that the city's in good hands.
So when are you coming back?
I know. I'm already thinking. It might be sooner than I thought.
All right, well, I now have a resolution for Commissioner Keller, which I will also bring up. And... Share my screen and show that. All right, Stephen, ready? I gotta take a deep breath, because this one's a little bit longer. Resolution CPC Number SK22-01, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville, expressing the Commission's sincere appreciation to Stephen Keller for nine years of outstanding service on the Emeryville Planning Commission. Whereas on July 16, 2013, the City Council appointed Stephen Keller to serve on the Emeryville Planning Commission for a three-year term, commencing on September 1, 2013, and ending on June 30, 2016. And whereas Stephen was reappointed to the Commission by the City Council on June 21, 2016, to a three-year term ending on June 30, 2019, and was again reappointed to the Commission by the City Council on June 18, 2019, to a three-year term ending on June 30, 2022. And whereas Stephen did not seek reappointment to the Commission in 2022 because he figured that nine years was enough, and since he was planning to retire and travel, it was time to pass the baton to new Commission members and get some of his life back. And whereas Stephen served as Vice Chair of the Commission from July 2015 to July 2016, and as Chair of the Commission twice, from July 2016 to July 2017, and again from July 2021 to June 2022. And whereas during Stephen's term on the Commission, a number of major development projects were approved by the Commission, including the Sherwin-Williams Project, final development plans for Marketplace Redevelopment Project, Parcels A, B, C, and D, and Christie Park Expansion, the Bayview Emeryville Apartments, also known as the Navy Site, Eustreavist, Affordable Housing Project, Hyatt Place Hotel at Bay Street, Bay Street Grocery Store, the Emeryville Center for the Arts, the Final Development Plan for the Biomed Emeryville Center of Innovation, and the Emery Station Overland Project. And study sessions were held on the Nellie Hanan Gateway Affordable Housing Project, Emeryville's first SB 35 project, the 4300 San Pablo Intergenerational Affordable Housing Project, Emeryville's second SB 35 project, the 5850 Shell Mound Life Sciences Tower, the Bay Center Life Science Building, the massive ONI Mixed-Use Project, which was later abandoned, and the Christie Avenue Mixed-Use Project that replaced it. And Stephen played a leading role in the deliberations on these and numerous other projects. And whereas during Stephen's term on the Commission, a number of long-range planning efforts were reviewed and/or recommended for approval by the Commission and adopted by the City Council, including the Emeryville Berkeley Oakland Transit Study, also known as EVOTS, Family Friendly Design Guidelines, new regulations for multi-unit residential development, new regulations for the preservation of significant structures, new regulations for cannabis dispensaries and cannabis manufacturing, updated regulations for accessory dwelling units, the 40th and San Pablo Bus Hub and redesign of 40th Street, regulations for high-rise development, elimination of minimum parking requirements, birth safe building standards, development bonus points for mass timber construction, the 2023 housing element, the Active Transportation Plan, and Objective Development Standards. And Stephen played an active role in the deliberations on all of these efforts. And whereas Stephen brought an inimitable, direct, frank, and critical manner to the submissions that improved the projects and thereby improved the lives of Emeryville residents, and whereas Stephen's leadership as Chair kept us on track and focused on the task at hand, and whereas Stephen's perspective always considered what was best for the people in this community, and whereas observing how Stephen looked at each application from different angles and provided the complete conclusions at the end of the hearing reminded me of how Hercule Poirot, I hope I said that right, solved his cases. We are thankful for his leadership as Chair and longtime contributions to the City of Emeryville. And whereas Stephen often presented independent research he had done on items under consideration, thus both improving the quality of those discussions and providing an excellent example for others to follow. And whereas Stephen's thoughtful and insightful leadership and wisdom on a variety of long-range and current planning issues will be greatly missed, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Stephen Keller for his outstanding service to the City of Emeryville and its citizens, and wishes him the best of luck in all of his future endeavors, approved by the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held on Thursday, July 28, 2022, and again, signed by everybody, and this will be suitably framed and provided to Commissioner Keller.
Oh, Charlie, thank you so much. You need a break after that one. I wanna give my thanks to everybody, staff, you and the planning staff, and everyone's always been so helpful and has always done such a great job and always been very considerate. Your presentation and your staff reports to us, it's always been very, very helpful to get the inside knowledge, and your extreme expertise was always very helpful. And to the Commission that I'm leaving, it's gonna be well missed. I have very mixed feelings about leaving. You know, you play such a critical part in some of these decisions, it's kinda hard to kinda give that up, but as the resolution said, it's time to pass the baton. I think, you know, the new people that are on that we've just reappointed or just sworn in are gonna do us a great job. And it's been a pleasure to serve the city, and I'm not going away, so I will be here to haunt you and hopefully offer my opinions when it's necessary, but won't have a vote in what's done, but I'm sure it'll matter just as much. But I wish everyone great luck and continued success for our city. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. We will miss you, all you. We learned a lot. We learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Guys, have a good meeting.
All right.
Bye, Erica.
Bye.
I hope to see you soon. It sounds like you might come back.
And maybe, and maybe you might see me on here, but on the other side, with the developers and the architects, so we'll see you. Thank you very much.
You won't have to recuse on those.
I know, I won't. Yeah.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
So, Vice Chair Simons, at this point, item 3.4 is nomination of a representative to the Parks Recreation Committee. Would you like for me to introduce that item?
That would be great. Thanks so much.
Okay. Multitasking here. All right. The roster for the Parks and Recreation Committee that has been approved by the City Council includes a liaison from the Planning Commission to the Parks and Recreation Committee. This is a member of the Planning Commission who has been basically appointed by the Commission to be their representative at the Parks and Recreation Committee. In the past, that has been Commissioner Chafe. Commissioner Chafe has, however, resigned from the Parks and Recreation Committee, so she can no longer be the Commission's liaison. I understand that Commissioner Gitzoni, who was on the Parks and Recreation Committee, has also resigned from that committee. So I suppose you could make him your liaison, but my sense is that he probably wouldn't want to serve any further, since he resigned as a citizen member of the committee. So that leaves the other five Commissioners as potential candidates, and that could include any of you, including any of the three new Commissioners, if you are interested. So I guess at this point, I would just like to ask if anyone wants to volunteer, or if anybody wants to nominate somebody, another Commissioner, to be the Commission's liaison to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Charlie, can I ask why, of all our committees, we have somebody representing the Planning Commission on the Parks and Rec ones? It seems like we could have a planning person on every committee.
Yes, I can't really answer that. I'm afraid I don't have the background. I believe when the Parks and Recreation Committee was created, they just decided they wanted a Planning Commissioner on it. I think the other committees were created at different times, when that sensibility perhaps wasn't there. That's the best I can offer as an answer. I agree, it might make sense to have a Planning Commission liaison to other committees as well, but this is what the City Council has established for this particular committee.
Got it. So what happens if we nominate nobody, or unless somebody expresses interest?
Well, then you just don't have a voice on the Parks and Recreation Committee. I mean, it goes two ways. You know, your liaison can present the Planning Commission perspective at the Parks and Recreation Committee meetings, and then that person can also report back to the Commission, as Commissioner Chafe often did, on what the Parks and Recreation Committee was talking about.
Commissioner, could you weigh in on what you think about the value of having a Planning Commissioner on the Parks and Recreation Committee, since you served on it?
Well, I would say that a lot of our developments have parks or park-oriented things involved, and one of the things that we seem to be trying to accomplish is a higher rate of park areas and park programming. So I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense. I will say, while I don't have as much time to do that as I did in the past, which is why I stepped down, it is not as big of an obligation as being on the Planning Commission. It is just one meeting once a month, and it usually runs about an hour and a half.
And is it during the day, or it's in the evening, right?
It's at 5:30 on the third Wednesday of the month.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask a question, just following up on that? I mean, yeah, it does seem to be some synergy, right, with like a new development, putting down a new park, but you know, if that, say that new development is being put in front of the Planning Commission, I wouldn't mind having like some input statement or recommendation, right, from the Parks Committee. I almost see the communication as the other way around, like...
Typically, we typically have that as well.
Okay.
Mira can tell you that most of the major development projects, she makes a presentation or the applicant makes a presentation to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Is that correct, Mira?
That is correct. The staff report includes what each committee has made comments on. So like for today's, my item, the feedback comments that were made for my project should be presented to you, and it's also included in the staff report. So that's pretty typical.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the information is there. It's not like we're not gonna have any communication with the Parks and Recreation Committee if we don't have a Commissioner who's the official liaison. It's just as nice to have one. And I'd also just say, in terms of that committee, it also helps with their quorum issues, because if there's no Planning Commission liaison, then they have a vacancy on that committee, which might make it more difficult for them to muster quorum for a meeting.
Charlie, so is anybody interested in serving?
I can report to the City Clerk that the Planning Commission did not have anyone to serve at this time.
Do that. Thanks, Charlie.
That appears to be the will of the Commission right now. Perhaps some of the newer Commissioners might think about it a little more when they get a little more seasoned. Okay, well, I guess, should we move on? Vice Chair Simons?
Yes, let's do that. Thank you.
All right, item 3.5 is the resolution declaring the need for the Planning Commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. I introduced this back when I read the introductory statement at the beginning of the meeting. So this is kind of a routine item that we have to do every month now in order to continue to meet remotely, so at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion on this resolution. Sir, would you like to motion for that? I'm sorry, I missed who that was. Was that Commissioner?
Rod Henme, yeah.
Commissioner Henme made the motion, I believe Commissioner Gitzoni seconded? Was that...
Yes.
Can I get that? Okay. All right, on the motion, Commissioner Chafe... Oh, I have to reorder these now. Let's see. Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chafe, I mean Chair Chafe, has an excused absence this evening. So six ayes, the motion is approved. Thank you. Next item is public comment. I have a little statement to read for that. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on this agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to... Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you are calling in, press star nine on your phone. At this time, I will check to see whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hands to make any comments. Please bear with me for a second. Need to double check my email. I do have one online comment card, but it is for a specific agenda item, item 9.2. I do not have any online comment cards for general comments. There is one raised hand among the attendees, Jerry Santarpia. So I will call on Mr. Santarpia for three minutes. Go ahead, please. You may unmute.
Hello, council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello.
Good evening, members of Emeryville Planning Commission, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I just had to make your time quick regarding the Christie Avenue Mixed Use Project.
Excuse me, sir.
My name is Jerry Santarpia.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Is this is a comment on an agenda item?
Yes.
Item 9.2?
Yes.
Okay, the item before us right now is general comments for items that are not on the agenda.
All right, I'm sorry.
So if you can stick around for a little while until we get to item 9.2, you can make comments at that time.
Thank you. I will.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't see any other raised hands among the attendees. Let me take one last double check of my email. No online comment cards. So seeing no additional online speaker cards and no additional raised hands among the attendees, the public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. So Vice Chair Simons, we would now move on to the approval of the action minutes.
Okay, great. So now we are, this is approval of action minutes for special meeting May 16th, regular meeting May 26th, and special meeting June 8th. Do I have a motion?
Vice Chair Simons, could I just, can I just jump in real quick? Is that okay?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to, since we have new Commissioners this evening, and to remind our returning Commissioners that even if you did not, you were not on the Commission or you did not attend the meeting for which approval of action minutes is requested, you are still entitled to vote to approve the minutes. Your vote is simply to confirm that the minutes are, to your knowledge, accurate and reflect what occurred at the meeting. So it doesn't matter if you weren't on the Commission or you weren't at the meeting, you are still welcome to vote on the, on approval of the minutes.
Thanks so much, Kristi.
And Vice Chair Simon, I would like to ask for a separate vote on each set of minutes, if you don't mind.
Okay, perfect. So let's do, do I have a motion on the May 16th, 2022 special meeting minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
I'm sorry, missed the second. Who was that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, on a motion by Commissioner Gietzoni and seconded by Commissioner Wax to approve the May 16th minutes. Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gietzoni.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Mora.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons.
Aye.
And Chair Chafe has an excused absence this evening. So six ayes, those minutes are approved. Thank you.
And now do I have a motion for the May 26th regular meeting minutes?
I'll move. Make a motion for that as well.
I heard several. I think I heard Commissioner Henme first.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner Gietzoni with the second. All right, on approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of May 26th, Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gietzoni.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Mora.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons.
Aye.
And Chair Chafe has an excused absence this evening. So six ayes, those minutes are approved.
And now we have a motion for the June 8th special meeting minutes.
I'm going to approve.
I'll move. Second.
I believe the motion was by Commissioner Wax.
And Henme, Henme seconded.
Got it. Thank you. On the motion to approve the special minutes of the special meeting of June 8th, Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gietzoni.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Mora.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons.
Aye.
And Commissioner Chafe has an excused absence. Six ayes, those minutes are approved. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I guess we have item six, Community Development Director Reports next. Let's hear it, Charlie.
Right, thank you, Vice Chair Simons. So this is my report on recent City Council actions and other things that might be of interest to you. As you know, your last regular meeting of June, I think it was 23rd, was canceled. So your last regular meeting was on May 26th, which was the last time that I reported to you on City Council actions. So that was two months ago, and in that time, there have been four City Council meetings, June 7th, June 21st, July 5th, and July 19th. And here's what the Council did that is planning related at those meetings, at those four meetings. On June 7th, the City Council held a study session to review the draft 2023 to 31 housing element of the general plan. As some of you may recall, the Commission held a similar study session at your May 26th meeting. The Council offered various comments on the draft housing element. The Council prioritized upcoming capital improvement projects and authorized staff to submit grant applications for them, which staff subsequently did. Projects for which grant applications were submitted include the Emery Go Round General Benefit, that is the payment for, for general use of the Emery Go Round by people from outside the city, the Doyle Street Village Green Construction from 59th to 61st Street, Schelmann-Christie Loop Study, Schelmann, Stanford Greenway Study, and the 40th Street Multimodal Corridor Construction. Also, on June 7th, the Council passed an urgency ordinance and adopted the first reading of a regular ordinance to modify the expiration date of an ordinance that had been passed in 2022 related to, I mean, in 2020, sorry, related to expedited permitting for temporary outdoor seating for restaurants and bars during the COVID-19 pandemic. That 2020 ordinance originally expired in August of 2021, a year after its effective date. The ordinance is adopted by the City Council on June 7th will extend the expiration date to 180 calendar days after the expiration of the city's declared state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. They also declared that any outdoor dining facilities that were approved under the 2020 ordinance, which had expired but has now been reactivated, remain valid and conforming. The Council passed the second reading of the regular ordinance on June 21st. Also on June 21st, as you know, the Commission, the Council, rather, appointed Rod Henme, David Mora, and Jordan Wax to the Planning Commission. They also made appointments to various other committees, including three that are staffed by the Community Development Department, which include the Economic Development Advisory Committee, the Housing Committee, and the Public Art Committee. And the Council approved a determination that the city-owned Christie sites at 5898, 5900 and 6150 Christie Avenue are exempt from the Surplus Lands Act. The Council also approved the release of a request for proposals for the development of the Christie sites with a minimum of 300 units, of which at least 25% must be affordable to lower-income households, consistent with the exempt Surplus Lands Act determination. The RFP was released on June 22nd, and the proposals are due by August 5th. I would note that whatever ends up being the proposed development for this, these sites, which are south of Christie Park, will ultimately need to come to the Planning Commission for, well, at least for study sessions, if not for entitlements. On July 5th, the Council passed the first reading of an ordinance amending the planning regulations to add mass timber construction as a community benefit eligible for development bonuses. Some of you will recall that the Commission recommended adoption of this provision at your May 26th meeting. The Council passed the second reading of the ordinance on July 19th. And also on July 19th, the Council approved the Emery Station Overland Project, including a conditional use permit for parking more than the maximum. As some of you will recall, at your special meeting on June 8th, the Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit and design review permit for the project, but recommended denial of the conditional use permit for parking more than the maximum. To earn the required development bonus points, the project includes payment of an increased affordable housing impact fee and community benefits consisting of conversion of 10 of the 41 livework units in the adjacent Hollow Street building to below-market rate units and additional public open space. The project also includes bicycle circulation enhancement in the area and closure of Overland Avenue between 63rd and 64th Streets to motor vehicle traffic to create a linear park. The Council cited these improvements in approving the conditional use permit for parking more than the maximum. Concerning the 4300 San Pablo Avenue Intergenerational Affordable Housing Project, the Council approved a determination that the project site is exempt from the Surplus Lands Act and approved a lease disposition and development agreement, or LDDA, with EAH, the selected developer for the project. And I would note, you will see on your agenda that the Commission will be having a second study session on this project later this evening, where you will learn more about the project. Concerning the so-called Adeline Sites, the Council approved a determination that the project site is exempt from the Surplus Lands Act and approved a request for proposals to develop the site as affordable housing with a preference for formerly incarcerated individuals. This tiny property consists of three parcels at the intersection of 36th and Adeline Streets, two of which are in Oakland, and which total about five one-hundredths of an acre. So the likely scenario is that we would have one small building built on the site, which would contain rooms for low-income people, for low-income people, lower-income people. And finally, on July 19th, the City Council approved a contract with Adam Hollitzer, the former City Manager of Sausalito, to serve as the interim City Manager of Emeryville until a new permanent City Manager is hired to replace Christine Daniel, who has retired effective the end of July. Christine became our City Manager in September 2018, almost four years ago. Prior to that, she served as Assistant City Administrator of Oakland, City Manager of Berkeley, and Assistant City Manager of Fremont, among other things. Christine has had a long and illustrious career in city government, and we wish her the best in her retirement. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. If there are no questions, Vice Chair Simons, I would suggest we go on to the disclosure of ex parte communications and identification of conflicts of interest. Vice Chair Simons still with us?
Vice Chair Simons, you're muted, if you're there.
May I suggest that we maybe take a five-minute break so that Mr. Simons can return to the meeting?
Yeah, and Charlie, before we do that, could I just mention that the City Council has a policy that, it's not a written policy, but their practice is to keep cameras on while, during the duration of the meeting and to turn cameras off during a presentation that might take up the whole screen. That's fine, but we really would like to have you have cameras on so that the public can see your face throughout the duration of the meeting and can easily see which Commissioners are nodding or responding to comments. So it's important for purposes of, you know, just public interaction that we, you know, make sure that we keep our cameras on to the extent possible. Like I said, the Council will turn them off during a, a presentation that takes up the entire screen. It looks like Vice Chair Simons is back. So if we want to break, Charlie, you can, we can still take one, but I'll leave that up to the Chair.
All right, Vice Chair Simons.
Let's keep going, folks. Thanks so much.
Okay, so we are on to the disclosure of ex parte communications and identification of conflicts of interest.
I guess that's the least. Does anybody have any ex parte communication to disclose?
I received an email from community member John Schurman regarding the Christie Mixed Use Project.
Sorry, could I ask a clarifying question? So is this with like, if we had communication with any Commissioners or developer, does this relate to like, I mean, say I just talked to like my neighbor about it, that's not, is that?
I think Kristi can jump in here, but I believe the intent is primarily to disclose any communication you may have had with the applicant for any item on the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thanks, Charlie.
So if you just talked to your neighbor, you don't have to report that?
So not a, okay, so just the applicant, but?
Or a representative.
Or another Commissioner, right? Okay.
Well, I mean, you know from your orientation that you shouldn't be speaking to more than a, to other Commissioners at the most, but you, so you don't need to report that. I believe Commissioner Gietzoni and Simons have a couple of potential conflicts on tonight's agenda.
That's correct, Charlie. I have a conflict for item number 8.1, the Lab Master Sign Program.
And that's because of your proximity of your residence?
Yes, the location of my residence.
And I believe Commissioner Gietzoni has a similar conflict.
Yes, I have a conflict with 8.1 due to proximity, my residence, which I also own. It's APN 491035-50. And also on item 9.2 because of a conflict of interest since one of the applicants is a client of my employer.
And thank you, Commissioner Gietzoni, and this is a good opportunity for me to just clarify the difference between those two types of conflicts. If you have a conflict that is related to your residence, you are not required to leave the meeting, but you are required to step down from the proverbial dais. So I will be moving both Commissioner Simon and Gietzoni to the attendee group during that item 8.1, and then moving them back, and they are allowed to speak, as any other member of the public, for up to three minutes on that item during the public hearing. And then I will move them back to the panel after the item is over. However, for a conflict that arises from a business interest, such as Commissioner Gietzoni has on item 9.2, you must leave the meeting entirely and would not be in the attendee group at that point and cannot address the Commission as a member of the public. And I will then text him when that item is over to let him know that he can then rejoin the Zoom meeting. Commissioner Henme?
Yes, I have a location conflict with item 9.2.
Those are, those are all conflicts I'm aware of. Anybody else aware of any conflicts of interest or any further ex parte communications with any of the applicants? All right, at this point, Vice Chair Simons, I think we're ready to move on to the public hearings.
Great. Thanks so much, Charlie. Let's now do item, let's open public hearing number 8.1.
This is the Master Sign, the Lab Master Sign Program, and Assistant Planner Anna Lisa Garcia will make the staff presentation on this item.
Good evening, Vice Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Give me one moment while I have to share my screen. Okay, are you all able to see the PowerPoint for the Lab Master Sign Program?
No. Not yet.
And Charlie, shouldn't I be bumped down to the?
I'm sorry, yes, both. I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
Uh, oh. I'm sorry, Chair Simons, there's a procedural point here. Kristi might want to join in on this. Since the Vice Chair is recused and the Chair is absent, we need a presiding officer for this item. So the Planning Commission rules and regulations specify that in the absence of both the Chair and the Vice Chair, the Commission shall elect from among themselves a presiding officer for the item. It could be any one of you, but somebody. It could be any one of you, but somebody has to preside for this item. So, actually, Commissioner, Vice Chair Simons, you can, you can preside over the election of, of the, of the chair pro tem if you want to before you leave.
Sure, happy to do that. Um, let's have Commissioner Dram, I'd like to nominate him to be chair for this next item.
Right, is that acceptable?
Second.
And that was, uh, Commissioner Simons and Commissioner Wax, did I heard? Was that right?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Dram, are you okay with that? Where is Commissioner Dram? There he is. Mr. Dram, you've just been elected presiding officer for this item.
Okay, sorry, uh, my, my computer was broke. I had to reset, uh, the Zoom. I missed it. Can you repeat it, please?
I said you've just been elected as the presiding officer for this item because Vice Chair Simons is recused and?
Okay.
Chair Chafe is not here. All right? Very good.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Let's do it.
I will now demote, uh, demote, but I will move Commissioner Simons to attendee and Commissioner Gitzoni to attendee. Well, just happened. Hang on just a second, Annalisa.
Okay. You stopped.
No, no, it does, okay.
I'm Charlie, I'm still up.
I know you are. I'm trying to move you. You keep jumping around on the Zoom list here. Um, okay, there we go. Okay. I believe I have moved Commissioner Simons and Gitzoni to the attendee group. Yes, I have. Okay, go ahead, Annalisa.
Are you able to see the Master Sign Program? Okay. Let me move a couple of things here. Where is it? All right. Okay, so today I'm presenting on the Lab Master Sign Program located at four-three-eight-three Horton Street. In February of twenty-twenty-one, the Planning Commission approved Resolution Number FDP twenty-zero-zero-one-A, amending Resolution FDP twenty-zero-zero-one and reapproving a final development plan for, for the adaptive reuse of four-three-eight-three Horton Street, formerly known as fourteen-fifty Sherwin Avenue. Part of the Sherwin-Williams PUD thirteen-zero-zero-one was approved by the City Council in November of twenty-sixteen. The building has been named the Lab and will accommodate life science research and development space. The building is currently under construction for improvements, including a pass-through alley. So for site location, the building is located here along Horton Street and on the corner of Horton Street and Sherwin Avenue, and adjacent to it is part of the Emory Project Buildings B-one and B-two. The building is designated a significant structure with notable features of contrasting concrete and brick, windows recessed with concrete sills, and north-end symmetric concrete windows around the entrance, and staff has worked with the applicant to redesign sign signage so that it doesn't intercept with these notable features as much as possible. The Master Sign proposal creates standards for overall sign, site signage, including entry gateway signs, tenant wall signage, and address signs, and what it does is defines allowable sign size and materials for tenant signage, but it does not dictate content. So here we have the sign locations. In orange are the tenant wall signs. We also have the entry gateway signs as one and two, and the address signs, um, on both ends, and then down here is the parking sign that's proposed. The applicant has included a table of aggregate sign area as required for the Master Sign Program, and it does not exceed the maximum allowable sign area for the project. Here's a rendering showing this entry gateway sign, the Lab. Underneath you'll see the address sign, and if you look to the top right, you'll see the tenant sign example. Right now it's, um, read as Sherwin, and it is not illuminated. And so here we have the pass-through alley, which will, um, you would enter on Forty-Fifth Street, and then it takes you out to the Emory Project Buildings One and Two, and this is where the entry gateway signs are proposed on both ends. So here's an example of the entry gateway sign that will read the Lab. They're each about forty-two square feet in sign area, and they're halo-lit channel letters, and as a note, um, all illuminated, signage must be dimmable per the conditions. Here's the elevation demonstrating the height, and the address numbers will be down below. The entry gateway signs as shown here as well. These are non-illuminated, um, numbers. Here again is showing where the tenant signage is proposed, on the corner of Sherwin Avenue and Horton Street, um, on Horton Street and sort of Forty-Fifth Avenue, and then here on the north end, Forty-Fifth Street, I mean, and on the north end as well. And so the applicant or the Master Sign Program provides specific sign locations as well as materials and font, and states maximum allowable sign area and dimensions, but does not dictate the content. So the word Sherwin here is just for, um, an example, and when future tenants move in, they will then place their names in these locations. Here we have an elevation demonstrating the way the, um, tenant sign will look, and it's placed in that, in that specific location to try to avoid conflict with those existing features there. This is the second, um, tenant sign placed above. This is on the north corner along, um, Horton. Here's on the south Horton, south corner of Sherwin Avenue and Horton Street, again on the top of the building there. And here they have their parking sign, which will be, uh, painted graphic, and the sign area for this sign is about sixty square feet. And so the required findings for the Master Sign Program are that they're in character with the surrounding area, the permitted signage is no more than necessary, and it promotes visual harmony. And the design review findings is that it's consistent with the general plan, and it conforms to our design guidelines, and that the signs are of high-quality design that are compatible with and will not adversely affect the surrounding area of the building in this case. And staff recommends approval of the proposed, uh, the Lab Master Sign Program subject to the conditions of approval. And this ends my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant. And I'll leave this up in case you want to refer back to any signs, and yeah, let me know if you have any questions.
I'm sorry, Annalisa, did you see the applicant has a presentation or is just available for questions?
The applicant is available for questions.
All right. I am going to promote Stephen Kelly to the panel so that he can respond to any questions that, uh, the commission may have. So Commissioner Dram, at this point, it would be appropriate to ask your fellow commissioners if they have any clarifying questions of the staff or the applicant?
Commissioners, do you have any question?
Looks like Commissioner Henry has a question.
Yes, please, Commissioner Henry.
Yes, Commissioner Henry, um, I have a question about the sign that's at the top of the building along Horton Street, and, um, specifically, uh, since Horton, uh, is the primary source of traffic and movement, um, uh, do you think that this sign is going to be visible? And, and I guess the question is why locate that particular sign, not the one that's at the end, uh, but the one on Horton itself, uh, which is located there, yes? Why that particular location versus a lower location which might be more pedestrian-oriented?
Perhaps the applicant can respond to that question?
Yeah, hello. Um, I think we were trying to place it that high just for better visibility. Um, on that location was a very long, that's the long location on Horton, um, and that just seemed the best place, uh, along, um, the corridor as well.
I might comment that, um, it's also at the end of Sher, of Forty-Fifth Street, so I believe when you're driving?
Right.
Or walking down Forty-Fifth Street, you should be able to see it.
Did you ever consider placing it in the other roll-up door, uh, similar to your parking, parking sign? It would be a couple days to the right of this view.
That wasn't a place that we considered, um, knowing that we wanted a parking directional to direct traffic to the, um, parking space around the corner, um, the lower space.
No, I'm not suggesting replacing it. There's two roll-up doors that were shown in the elevation, one where you have the parking sign, and the other one's about, is to the left of that, is south of that. Uh, do you have the overall building elevation drawing? There are two overhead doors shown in the package that we received.
Oh, it might not be?
Oh, yeah, I don't have that in this PowerPoint.
Okay. So it's, it's, uh, it's fairly close to the entry. Uh, actually, uh, yeah, it's, it's about, i- if you look at this view now, it's about one or two days to the right of this, of this drawing, and then there's the parking roll-up door.
Yeah. Thank you for your question. It's about two days over from this opening. Um, I have a elevation here. Um, for symmetry with all the other tenants, since they're all, uh, the other ones are high up on the building, we wanted to keep this up as high as we could, uh, below the windows. There's no usable space above those windows for a tenant sign ban, so just for visibility and for symmetry, we decided to keep it on the roof.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I would also note that all those, these, these three kind of placeholder signs all say Sherwin, that's, again, just a placeholder, and those could be three different tenants with different names, right?
Correct.
Okay, any other commissioner? Go ahead.
I have some questions. Um, okay, so the address numbering on the front, is that going to end up being right under the lab sign for East Horton Street? Is that going to be, um, externally illuminated in any way, or how's that going to achieve visibility?
No.
Just like the lit backdrop, basically?
The address will be non-illuminated. They will just hang down, and the visibility is basically by the size. It's, I believe, twelve inches tall.
Okay. Um, from these renderings, the, the choice of black lettering in the front during the daytime renderings, like, looks really incongruous, but, um, I think maybe the renderings are not, uh, having the, the black accents on the windows and so forth show through. Is, is that why you chose black, because it'll tie in with those?
For the address rendering, are you saying? Are you asking?
No, I'm sorry, for the, well, actually, it's, it's all black, but I, I, I'm referring to the lab sign, um, and, you know, related framing.
Um, yes, we decided to use black. This is just a rendering. Um, the address will be non-illuminated, it'll be below the canopy. Um, the lab will be illuminated above, uh, with indirect lighting. It should be less, um, bright than a regular street light. Um, it'll be dimmable, and it'll be on a timer, so it will not be on.
Okay, um, sorry, I don't think my question was super clear. Um, what I'm asking is, is it your sense based on, um, based on your knowledge of the project that, that this, um, choice of black for this is going to tie in well with, with the aesthetic during the day, including on, well, not just the lab sign, but like, also the, uh, the tenant signs, like, look a little incongruous in the renderings, but...
I think it was really just to give it the most contrast. Um, the lab, black with the darker border during the day would really, um, be, have some pop to it, and then likewise at night, um, with the indirect lighting, it will be a subtle and, and, and professional way to illuminate that sign. We thought black was a, a good way to, to achieve this.
Okay, um, the southern door that you can see, well, the southeast elevation or the south corner rendering, um, in either case, is, uh, that for tenants coming into that side? Yes, that one. That, that's, is, that, that's a tenant door, not like a maintenance door or anything like that?
Oh, sorry, was my question for me.
Yeah, sorry.
I believe it's, I, I'm sorry, I believe it's a tenant door. I haven't personally been on-site and, and walked the, the property, um, so I couldn't say particularly.
It's difficult to do right now. Um, okay, well, my concern here is that there's no pedestrian-oriented signage over this door. Um, I really don't like it when going to an address and I have to, like, wonder which door I'm supposed to go into because, like, there's a door that's just completely unsigned. Um, so if there's a way we can solve that problem.
I believe that, if I may, um...
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Chair, Presiding Chair Dram, uh, I believe this door facing the south on Sherwin Avenue is not a public access door. I believe it's, uh, a fire exit and, uh, possibly a tenant door. The main entrance is intended to be the pass-through that runs from Forty-Fifth Street, uh, through the building over to the park.
Okay, so that's where people are intended to go in and, and get to the specific place they're going.
Right, exactly.
Um, okay, um, you know, my only other comment is just that, given, um, I, I, I really like the naming of this building. Well, actually, this is a comment, this is questions. My bad. Those comments, go ahead.
Those comments.
I, I, I'm, I'm done with questions.
Just questions, right?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, any other commissioner? I don't see any hands up, so, uh, Charlie, should we make a motion?
Uh, well, we need to hold a public hearing first.
Okay.
So I would suggest that you open the public hearing.
So you're opening the public hearing, uh...
Let me just read a little statement about that.
Sure.
Uh, now is the time for the public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star-nine on your phone. And right now, I will check to see if I have received any comment cards. I do not have any comment cards on this item. I will check to see if there are any raised hands among the attendees. I do not see any raised hands among the attendees, so, uh, Chair Dram, I would suggest that you, at this point, close the public hearing on this item.
So we are closing the, uh, public hearing, uh, item eight-point-one, and, um, my input on this project is, um, the designer did a very good job. Everything looks good to me. Uh, the size and the font and the locations are good, um, so should we?
Well, you can ask other, other commissioners to, uh, state their opinions if they wish, and then call for motion.
Awesome. So, uh, commissioners, any comments?
I see, I see Commissioner Henry and Commissioner Wax.
Go ahead. Yes. Commissioner Henry.
Yes, no, I, I, I think it's a, it's a well-done, uh, sign program. I, I particularly like the, uh, the, the lab, uh, the sort of main branding signs, and the two signs located at the ends of the building work well because they're perpendicular to line of sight, so when people are driving north or south, those are highly visible. That's why I was asking about the other one, but I think the, uh, the answer satisfied my, um, my concerns about the, uh, the sign on, uh, on Horton, so, um, so I, I support the project.
Awesome. And Commissioner Wax, right?
Yes. Please.
So I, I do like the design, um, of the, the lab nameplate. I, I do think it's a high quality. Um, it looks maybe like slightly hip for the neighborhood, but I, I think it's tolerable. Um, I, I do think there's a slightly missed opportunity here, given that, like, to, to me, when I think about naming the Sherwin-Williams Building the Lab, um, there's a, there's a really, uh, nice interplay between, you know, what this building used to be and, you know, where Emeryville is as a city. Um, I wish there was a little bit more play with color here, given that it was a paint factory, but I don't think that's- I wish there was a little bit more play with color here, given that it was a paint factory, but I don't think that's anything that I would want to hold this up for. Um, it's, it's a good-looking program. Uh, those are my comments.
Awesome, thank you so much. So Charlie, should we make a motion?
Absolutely. Whoever wants to move the item.
Okay, you're making a motion on item eight point one.
Right.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Henry and seconded by Commissioner Wax. Right? All right, Commissioner Dram.
Aye.
Maybe I should call you last since you're presiding. Uh, by, uh, Commissioner Dietzoni is recused. Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Simons is recused and Chair Chape is absent. So we have four ayes. This application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within fifteen days. So that concludes that item. I should let you know, um, Commissioner Dram, that I got an email from Commissioner Simons, Vice Chair Simons, that he is currently indisposed and not able to come back to the meeting for a little while. And so he would, I would like to request that you continue to preside until he returns. Is that-
Awesome, sure.
Any, any, any legal issues with that, Christie? Okay, we're good. Uh, so the next item, oh, I need to bring Commissioner, um, I don't know, I, I need to move Commissioner Dietzoni back into the attendee group, I mean, into the panel. And I'm gonna move... I'm gonna move Commissioner Simons back too, even though I'm not sure he's here. Okay, all right.
I think, yeah.
Did you have a question, Mr. Henry?
Yes, I have a, a legal question. So, uh, when persons are recused, um, then is it require a majority of the remaining commissioners to approve an item? Or a majority of the original number of commissioners to approve an item?
It's a majority of those present and voting as long as we have a forum. Right, Christie's nodding her head. In this case, in the case of the item that you just heard, uh, it was four ayes, so that's a majority, no matter how you count it. Uh, but if it were, say, three to one, it would still pass because that would be a majority of those present and voting.
Right, okay. And, uh, should there ever be a situation where it gets down to three commissioners, then we can't consider it?
You wouldn't have a forum.
Right, okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Dram, I know you were just getting into this, but Vice Chair Simon is back.
That's perfect.
Well, thank you, man.
Welcome back.
All right, uh, well, Vice Chair Simons, the next item is eight point two, the tree removal at fifty-nine eighty Horton Street.
Let's get, let's hear the staff presentation from that item. And I'm just wondering if at the start of the item, if we could see the questions that were asked to address at the start and end of the presentation? That would be really helpful. If there are questions for this one, I'm not sure there are.
This, this is a public hearing, so it's not a study session.
Oh, got it.
We don't have discussion questions for you for this. Assistant Planner Annalisa Garcia will also be presenting this item.
Hey, thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I will get to sharing my screen here. Let's see, are you all able to see my screen?
No.
It's, it's, well, it says it started, you started sharing. Oh, there we go.
Okay. So, item eight point two is a tree removal permit at fifty-nine eighty Horton Street. And this is a proposed removal and replacement of one tree. And so the applicant is requesting an expansion of an existing loading dock, I mean, loading zone and necessitates the removal of one London Plain tree on the north side of Fifty-Ninth Street between Horton and Pellidoo Street. A tree removal permit requires planning commission approval. It is subject to the conditions in the resolution. And if approved, will require an encroachment permit from Public Works, which will then require a tree replacement plan specifying the species and size of new trees, adequate rootable soil volume, proper drainage and consideration of tree grades and an automatic sprinkler system, as well as payment of a replacement value fee, which in this case for this specific tree is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. The site location is fifty-nine eighty Horton Street, um, along Horton and Fifty-Ninth. The tree is located here on the east end of Fifty-Ninth Street. So currently, um, the building does have a loading zone. It is located here along Horton Street, if you can see on this upper left corner of the site plan, the yellow triangle is the location of the existing, um, loading zone. And the applicant has stated that this loading zone does not accommodate the influx of larger loading trucks. And so what's happening is that the loading trucks are coming into this space and they have to block both lanes of traffic as well as the bike lanes. Here is the existing, um, loading zone along Fifty-Ninth Street. And so those larger trucks are coming on this end and, and they end up blocking a large amount of this space, including this bike lane, and that's been an ongoing issue. So this is something that staff has considered and ultimately supports the expansion of this loading area because of the bike lane that is consistently blocked. So the project proposes to remove the, um, London Plain tree seen here. And there are existing trees to remain, although the arborist report will also specify protections for these existing trees as well, for the work that will be done to enlarge this loading zone. And so this is the London Plain tree and arborist report was conducted. And the arborist determines that the, the tree is in excellent health and the assessed monetary value is three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. The city consulting arborist confirmed, um, the monetary value as well. So again, if this tree removal is approved, then a replacement tree is required. And the applicant is proposing the replacement tree to be here along Pellidoo Street, adjacent to the fifty-eight fifty-eight Horton Street building. The city consulting arborist has, um, requested that, or suggested that the replacement species be a brush box tree similar to this one here and says that the replacement location will allow this tree to thrive to maturity. And so the recommendation is that, uh, the tree removal be proposed, that is proposed, be approved, subject to the conditions in the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant.
So I have promoted the applicant, Jeff Sears, to the panel so that you can ask him questions if you wish to. So, uh, Vice Chair Simons, it would probably be appropriate to poll your fellow commissioners, see if they have any questions for either staff or the applicant. So Annalisa, the applicant does not have a separate presentation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, Charlie. I see a couple of commissioners. Questions, let's start with Commissioner Henry.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, I did walk by and took a look and saw two cars comfortably parked in that loading zone after hours, which means that it's probably a fifty-foot long space. So my question is, um, uh, can you confirm exactly, or can, can you, can you confirm the dimension of the existing space and the reason for the extension of it and how much will it be extended? Um, that is, does the FedEx truck not fit into that space or do the delivery trucks not fit into that space? So can you clarify the exact reasoning for this lengthening?
Jeff, do you have a response for that?
Uh, certainly. This is Jeff Sears, Labor Development. This building is a laboratory research building. And as such, it has a lot of deliveries of equipment. And so, um, it is true that one eighteen-wheeler can fit in the existing space. What Annalisa accurately referred to is we often find more than one truck there at a time. And so, um, the, the tension between the bike lane and having more than one truck trying to use this area um, caused sort of repeated conflicts with the bike lane that was pointed out to us by staff and by some of your city council members. So we were, and we observed it ourselves. So this is to allow hopefully two trucks to get in there. And these are trucks that are much bigger than a FedEx truck. FedEx truck could go in that, uh, other loading zone you saw. It's trucks that are larger, that have to back in, that, uh, we're trying to accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's go for Commissioner Wax next.
Uh, yes, the arborist called for a tree protection fence. Does the applicant intend to install that as part of this process?
We're, uh, have reviewed the conditions of approval and are applying with them.
Commissioner Wax, I think that the fence you're talking about is around the adjacent tree that, to protect it while they're removing and expanding it. Is that right, staff?
Yes, the tree protection plan is for the existing trees that are to remain.
Great, thank you. Annalisa, um, let's have a question from David.
Oh, yeah, maybe I missed it, but, um, where was the, there was a replacement tree. Where was that gonna go relative to the previous tree?
That, so here is the tree to be removed and then the replacement tree is proposed here on Pellidoo Street.
Uh, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any, all right, it looks like Commissioner Henry has another question.
Sorry, one more question. Um, I noticed, uh, there's a, a conflict with the bike lane and deliveries in the front of the building along Horton Street. And if you go to, even if you look on the Google Maps view, there's a truck parked right, right in the bike lane. So, uh, my question, meaning along the red curb and, uh, on Horton Street. And my question is, is this intended to try and address that conflict as well?
I think I can perhaps res- well, Jeff, do you want to take that?
Well, um, I would just say we, we don't have policing power in the streets. We're trying to take every step possible to minimize truck, car, uh, bicycle conflict. Um, and so, yes, that's our goal. Um, you know, we also, uh, as part of the approval that Charlie reported on a, on a new project down, down the street, we have agreed to a bunch of bike lane improvements with barriers that would prevent that problem. But ultimately, until we're able to effectuate those improvements as part of that project, it requires enforcement because we could have twenty loading zones. And if Amazon pulls up on a red curb, it's not, we, we aren't able to ticket in public streets.
Right, understand, thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other questions from commissioners? Okay, they got it. So Charlie, with the next time, do we do your comments or do we do a motion here?
Uh, well, first you need to open the public hearing, see if anybody wants to talk, and then close the public hearing.
Great, well, let's open the public hearing then.
All right, and let me just repeat my little spiel about that. Now is the time for the public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. At this time, I will check my email one more time to see if any online speaker cards have been submitted for this item. I do not see any. And likewise, I do not see any raised hands among the attendees. So at this time, I think it would be appropriate, uh, Vice Chair Simons, for you to close the public hearing. Vice Chair Simons, can we close the public hearing at this point?
You are muted, Vice Chair Simons.
I believe he's dealing with a small child.
Oh.
He may be having trouble going to bed. That's, that's the, uh, none of us can relate to that, but I think that's, there he is.
I'm muted.
Vice Chair Simons, are you ready to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion?
Anybody have any good jokes?
I was a limerick islander recently, but unfortunately I didn't hear any, didn't hear any good limericks.
Oh, you're kidding.
They don't have any good limericks in Limerick. At least I didn't hear any. Uh, did, did Vice Chair Simons leave the meeting entirely?
Yes, yes, it looks like he's trying to restart now.
Okay.
Would you like to get a break?
Perhaps that would be appropriate. Commissioner Dram, would you like to step in for a minute and maybe-
Yeah, of course.
Give us a five-minute break or you could continue, uh, you could continue with the commission deliberation on this item, I suppose. Christie, would that be-
Can we, Christie?
I think that's acceptable. Um, we don't have a vice chair right now in the meeting, so, yeah.
So we are going to close, I, I ca- I call, uh, to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
On item eight point two.
Okay. And, uh, you can ask your fellow commissioners if they have comments.
If you have any comments, commissioners. No questions, so...
Uh, well, hearing none, um, then I would like to, uh, make comment. I mean, I, I, uh, support the, the move. Uh, but I would like to bring up one issue. Am I able to share a screen? Is that okay? To show a existing condition? Yeah, okay. So, um, this is the, uh, conflict that I mentioned. So you can see how this, uh, truck is parked on the red curb and the, uh, these, uh, pedestrian, these bicycle, uh, plastic barriers um, stop short. Um, and that's why that FedEx truck can park. So I understand the applicant's concern that you can't police it. But I suggest as part of these improvements, that two more of these col- these plastic barriers be planted. Um, one of them for sure is clearing the turnings from the garage. Like, it would be about where that wheel of the truck is. And I actually think two, one that would be not quite a space, but at least one more, probably two, is better. So that truck would at least have to drive over those barriers in order to park. Uh, that is, it would discourage the truck from parking. And I, uh, and clearly this is illegal as, as, as we know, and we don't expect the applicant to be out there ticketing. But since this is about these issues of loading and, um, bicycle safety, um, I suggest we try and address this with this fairly inexpensive fix as part of this project, if, if that's appropriate, or is this a city improvement?
May I respond to that?
Of course, thank you.
Um, that, I, I also have come across that in Google Street View. That, I also have come across that in Google Street View, which is somewhat amusing. But I believe those cones or plastic bollards along the edge of the bike lane were installed by the city. I think it would be appropriate if they, if they are to be more installed, that that also be done by the city. I can pass along your suggestion to the Public Works Director. I would also note, as Mr. Sears mentioned, that the Emery Station Overland project that was approved by the city council on July 19th includes the installation of a vertical curb, six-inch-high vertical curb where those plastic bollards are today. And that is intended to prevent delivery trucks like that from being able to pull it next to the curb because there would be an actual physical barrier there. And that is what the planning commission, I mean, the city council approved as part of that project. As Mr. Sears says, it'll take a while for that to actually be installed. But that is the solution that has been approved.
Thank you. Then, yeah, then that, that took the recommendation to DPW, I guess, and otherwise I support the modification.
Awesome. Any other commissioner? Any comments? No comments. So it's time to make a motion on item 8.2, tree removal, 5980, Order 3. I move to.
Let's see. Did I, did I hear Commissioner Mora? Is that you that made the motion?
That's Rod.
Oh.
I made, yeah.
Okay, I thought you made the second. Okay, Commissioner Henby made the motion, who made the second? I'm sorry, it's hard for me to follow on the Zoom screen.
Commissioner Wax, I believe.
Wax was second, okay. All right, let's see. Commissioner Henby made the motion, Commissioner Mack, Wax seconded for to approve this tree removal permit. On the motion, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henby?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons is absent for the moment. Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Sorry, I should have called him in a different order. And Chair Chape is absent. So five ayes, this tree removal permit is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Perfect. So should we go for a five-minute break?
Sounds good to me. Are the commissioners okay with that?
Okay, see you in five minutes. Minutes, make it seven minutes.
Eight, 10?
Eight, 10.
All right, see you all at eight, 10.
See you eight, 10.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's 8:10 PM. Commissioner Mora, are you here? Commissioner Mora?
There he is.
Okay, perfect. I think we need to keep our cameras on unless there is a staff report or some kind of report on the screen. So should we go with item 9.1, direct right?
Yes, this is a study session on 4300 San Pablo Avenue. And again, Assistant Planner Annalisa Garcia will make this presentation.
Awesome, thank you.
You ready, Annalisa? All right, here we go.
I am almost there, okay. So agenda number, item number 9.1 is the 4300 San Pablo Affordable Apartments project. And for site location, this is 4300 San Pablo Avenue, located along San Pablo, on the corner of 43rd Street as well. To the north of the site are the Emery Villa Affordable Housing Apartments. To the east are some residences, and then across on the west, we have some retail tenants. There is Mindy and so forth. So for project background, bear with me, I know a couple of you have already heard this, but for the new commissioners' benefit, I will go through it. So in April of 2017, the city council adopted resolution number 1751, designating the city-owned property as an affordable senior rental housing development site. Staff was authorized to issue a request for qualifications. Several potential developers expressed concern over financial feasibility due to FAR and density constraints. Staff proposed amendments to the general plan and planning regulations to increase the maximum development potential. And in October of 2018, the city council adopted resolution number 18153, amending the general plan to increase the maximum development potential, and the planning regulations were subsequently amended for consistency. In December of 2018, the city council directed staff to reconsider the site to provide multi-generational housing rather than solely senior housing. In March and April of 2019, staff presented the concept of intergenerational housing to the Commission on Aging and the Housing Committee. These conversations resulted in the city council approving modifications of the RFP for the development of an affordable senior or intergenerational rental housing project. And in September 28th, 2021, state bill 591 was signed into law authorizing the establishment of intergenerational housing development. In July of 2020, the city council approved EAH Housing as a selected developer of the project, and the city entered into an exclusive right-to-negotiate agreement. The lease disposition and development agreement, or LDDA, has gone through its first reading with the city council on July 19th of this year, and it is anticipated to be approved by city council on September 6th. As part of the agreement, the applicant agreed to holding two planning commission study sessions as well as committee and community meetings. So the project is submitted, well, it's a SB 35 submittal, so it is mandated ministerial approval. And AB 1763 also applies because the project site is located within one-half mile of transit, so there is no density limit. And the SB 35 projects would normally preclude any planning commission or city council review, but the applicant has agreed with the city to hold two planning commission's study sessions, and this is the second. So the first planning commission study session was held on March 24th of this year. Again, the commission has no discretion, but feedback is valuable and may shape the project as it has. So the commission was generally very supportive of the project, especially the affordability and the intergenerational aspect of the project. The commissioners also appreciated the design elements, such as the decorative metal and wood panel. And some of the suggestions were space for cargo bikes, defining the amenity space as well as incorporating native landscape design. So for some background on SB 35, it is ministerial approval. The development project is only subject to objective design standards. And that means that new personal or subjective judgment may be involved. There are no findings for the project, and no conditions of approval may be imposed. So all analysis is a straightforward yes or no of the project's compliance with development standards. As part of the pre-application process for SB 35 applications, a tribal consultation is required. So staff has reached out to tribes around the area, and they are able to request a consultation if they'd like. We did have one tribe reach out to us, and we met with them as part of the pre-application process. We engaged in a tribal consultation earlier this month. They had some concerns regarding potential human remains on site. We discussed excavation, and ultimately, we agreed to a ground-penetrating radar as a preliminary way of determining if there are any human remains or artifacts on the site. And that is still underway, and we have a second meeting planned in August. So again, AB 1763 applies to the site, which essentially is all of Emeryville because it is located within half-mile of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridor. And so this is the super-density bonus law. And the project is eligible for four incentives or concessions. And they may request an unlimited number of waivers of development standards. So incentive or concessions are usually focused on cost, and the 100% affordable housing project is eligible for four incentives or concessions, and again, an unlimited number of waivers. So the project is an existing about half-acre site. There's an existing portable structure on the site. So they planned to remove that portable structure and construct a five-story building with 68 affordable residential units. The project will be intergenerational, and 55 units will be allocated for seniors, while 13 units will be allocated for transitional age youth. There will be about 9,360 square feet of amenity space. The project will provide 21 vehicular parking spaces as well as 68 long-term bicycle spaces and four short-term bicycle spaces. So here's the current site condition, the portable structure here along San Pablo Avenue frontage. This is at the intersection of San Pablo and 43rd Street. And here's our proposed rendering of the building. This is along San Pablo and 43rd here. And you'll see some of the units have balconies fronting San Pablo, and we'll get more into the design in a bit. So in terms of zoning, in this, there is a 1.5 base FAR, and the project proposes 3.07 FAR floor area ratio. A waiver is requested for that. The building height, typically there'd be a 40-foot base height, and the project proposes 61 feet. They are eligible for a 33-foot height bonus, given they are 100% affordable project. In terms of density, we have 50 units, 50 dwelling units per acre, and 145 dwelling units per acre are proposed with unlimited density, again, for the 100% affordable project. In terms of parking, there is no minimum, but 21 vehicular parking spaces are proposed. They are compliant with the 68 long-term parking spaces, equates to one per dwelling unit, and they will. dwelling unit, and they will provide four short-term bicycle spaces. They are requesting a waiver for unit mix. Our requirements are listed here. They are not proposing any three-bedroom units, but we do have some two-bedroom units, one-bedroom studios. Waivers are also requested for setbacks and open space. As you can see here, the, in particular, the rear yard setback would be seventy-four feet, and that's given, that's in relation to the height of the building. They're proposing a nine-foot rear yard setback, side setbacks as shown. The common open space, they are proposing slightly less. Private open space is nine hundred and sixty feet, and that nine hundred and sixty feet is coming from twenty-four units that will have balconies with forty square feet of private open space. So here's the first, proposed first-floor plan, where we have the entry here along San Pablo Avenue. They have defined their amenity space in response to commissioner comments. So what, we will have the management and office rooms, the mailroom, and then there's like a conference room and co-working space, as well as lounge. The bicycle room is also shown here, which I believe has since been expanded, and a multipurpose room, and the use of these spaces is intended to have maybe like a community assembly, classroom space shared between the seniors and the transitional age youth. And this is just part of their amenity spaces on the ground floor. There's more amenity space here on the courtyard. So this second-level floor plan will have eight studios, I mean, four, I mean, yes, sorry, eight studios, four one-bedrooms and two two-bedroom units. And a majority of the common open space is located here on the courtyard, and there's this classroom space that will open to this elevated courtyard space. Levels three through five will have eighteen, twelve studios, four one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms. And here we have our elevations. So this is fronting San Pablo Avenue. There's a lot of transparency here intended on the main frontage. Here are elevations fronting Forty-third Street. This is the main vehicular access, and then fronting the Emery Villa Apartments. And this is the elevation fronting residential units and the elevated courtyard space, as well as majority of the balconies. In terms of landscaping, the project will cover about four thousand one hundred and fifty square feet and will feature both native and non-native species. The project is subject to large relo or water efficiency landscape ordinance requirements. And I have, we have featured some native species here. And in terms of general plan conformity, the project conforms to the diversity of lifestyles, ages, and income levels that will be accommodated through zoning and community facilities and programming, given the project is, will house both senior and transitional age youth, and they are working on programming to support the groups. And the city supports transit-oriented development with reduced parking requirements. They are providing twenty-one vehicular spaces, where I believe forty-seven, fifty-seven vehicular spaces would be the estimated parking demand. And the project also will provide native species in the new landscapes that are proposed. And so to be considered, or does the, does a commission have any feedback regarding the overall project? And do you have any feedback considering the waivers of development standards requested by the applicant? This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as is the applicant, and I will note the applicant does have a presentation to follow.
Well, thank you so much, Annalisa. It was amazing, as always.
Thank you.
And I think Commissioner Gesuni have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Annalisa, for that, that presentation. I appreciate the work that goes into that. I have just two questions. One is the FAR of 3.07 exceeds, but they would be eligible for up to 3.0, right? Is that correct?
With a base, yes. I mean, with a bonus, but that would not apply here.
Right. But so the waiver they're looking for is for a really small variation, it sounds like. Is that correct?
Well, can I just elaborate here on this?
Yeah.
As Annalisa said, this is a ministerial approval that is subject only to objective development standards. And the way we interpret that is the base level is the objective standard. Anything above the base requires a discretionary improvement. So even though the bonus FAR, as you noted, is 3.0, that's not relevant here because that's not applicable to this project, because that would require a discretionary decision. So the, the objective standard FAR that is allowed is 1.5. So they are asking for a waiver from that.
Right. But we would not be considering the waiver here? Is that what you're telling me, or?
Yes, there's no decision-making authority of the planning commission for this project. This is simply being presented to you for information and for your feedback and comments. This is, under state law, under SB thirty-five, this has to be a staff-level decision.
Okay. I have one other question. Can we see slide eighteen real quickly? I just was, wanted to see the under it on public spaces. So, okay, common open spaces under a little bit, private open spaces. Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gesuni. I think Commissioner Henry has a question.
I'm sorry, no, I'll wait till after the applicant's presentation.
Okay, awesome. I don't see any raised hand, and we are waiting to hear from applicants. Go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Lily Simacella. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I am actually trying to share my screen. Oh, there it goes. Thank you for allowing that.
And thank you, Annalisa, for that very thorough report.
Yeah.
I want to introduce myself. I'm Steve Pratt with, I'm Business Development Manager with EAH Housing, and I'm joined here with Bianca Newman, Director of Business Development at EAH, and Lily Simacella with KTGY. Lily is the design lead on this project. I just want to emphasize how excited we are to work with the City of Emeryville with this project. There was some advocacy work done by EAH and the City of Emeryville last year around SB five ninety-one, and that, that really pushed that SB five ninety-one to be passed last year. And that in turn paves the way for this development to potentially be the first intergenerational housing community within the state of California. So this is a wonderful project for the City of Emeryville in the Bay Area, but also it's a wonderful project for the, for the entire state. Over the last two years, we've had, we've had a great time working with the city and staff and Chad and Annalisa and Valerie. We just had a wonderful time working with everybody on this project, and we're really excited to see it come to fruition. So as Annalisa noted, we did bring this project to the planning commission back in March. We received some comments, and we've incorporated those comments and that feedback within the designs that you're seeing this evening. So I'll turn it over to Lily. You can, she'll dig a little bit more into the design changes, and then also a little bit more into the waivers and concessions. And, and then myself, Bianca and Lily will all be here for questions, should there be, at the end. So Lily, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I am a Director of our KTGY Oakland Design Studio, and I'd just like to reiterate, I'm so excited to be working on this building and providing quality affordable housing in the city of Emeryville. So we have a couple of discussion topics we would like to focus on today since our last study session, and those are loading, bicycle parking and storage, and sustainability. And, and as Annalisa mentioned, our site sits on the corner of San Pablo and Forty-third. I'd like to bring attention to this side of Forty-third in our discussion of loading later on. Our team really set this goal early on to enhance our San Pablo frontage with residential services and amenities such as offices and co-work spaces, multipurpose room, the bicycle room, and the laundry. Behind this amenity space is our garage and our vehicular entries. You can see here is the vehicular entry along Forty-third Street. And our proposal for loading is twofold. We are requesting for a waiver, slight deviation from the requirement with a waiver. The requirement is for off-street loading at twenty-five, ten by twenty-five. What we're proposing is that on Forty-third Street, we have one loading space that meets this stall requirement. And then we are also trying to meet the requirement with a off-street onsite loading stall in the garage at eight and a half by eighteen feet. So to better explain this, here's the plan of our building, the San Pablo and Forty-third. One is our proposed off-site stall, so on-street loading area. And then number two is our off-street loading stall. And so if, just to bring clarity, if we were to meet the requirement for the off-street loading stall, this stall would have to be ten by twenty-five deep. And with the constraints of our site, which is only 100 feet deep, it really starts to take away from, from the amenity space, which is, which is pretty tight because we have a double-loaded driveway. Our second topic is sustainable transportation, primarily bicycle. We complied with our previous proposal, but I think there is requests for a little bit more detail in terms of the breakdown of stalls. We're required to provide sixty-eight long-term stalls and three short-term stalls. And we're providing sixty-eight long-term stalls, sixty-four of them being double-level at stackers, three of them being single-level in case, I think, you know, in case, I think, accessibility to be able to kind of go under and not have any problems with anything above. And then one stall that is large enough for a cargo or trailer in case, you know, any of our tenants have, you know, a larger bike, either for their grandchildren or shopping, you know, need. So here is a plan showing, this is a slight deviation from what Annalisa showed. We have enlarged our bicycle room. The comments were to add the cargo stall, not to add the single stalls without the double-decker, and we've done that and extended the bicycle room further. And then there was also a request for a more direct route from the lobby, which is this among San Pablo. So what we've done is, you know, you come through the lobby and you turn right into the bicycle park. Our intent is for security, not to have direct access from, from San Pablo into the bicycle park. And then, of course, we have our four short-term stalls along the frontage of San Pablo. That is marked in blue. There is very specific requirements in the Emeryville Municipal Code for bicycle parking, and the distances in terms of clearances from the wall between stall racks and then access aisles. And we're just showing here in this detailed plan that we are complying with those requirements. And then our last topic of discussion is sustainability, which is always something that's important for us at KTGY and EAH. Buildings create so much greenhouse gas emissions, and I've heard even they're up to 39%. And so we're striving to make an impact in the buildings we design. And for us, that means incorporating elements early on in the sustainability of the design. That's when a lot of our buildings get shaped. So our proposal is an all-electric building, to have 25% of our stall EV capable, and then four of them EV-ready. We are meeting water-efficient landscape ordinance requirements. We're also meeting 10% of the site area to be landscaped, and we're providing even more of that. Our solution to providing landscape in such a tight footprint is to have a podium where the building pulls back from our rear neighbor and then provides a courtyard on the podium. And then we are also proposing solar rotate and universal bike storage, as I mentioned before. And we're always really trying to provide choose environmentally-preferred materials when we can. Here is a chart breaking down our requests. We are requesting for two concessions and two waivers. So as was mentioned before, we have an FAR, about 3.1, and we're asking a concession for that. And then the setback requirement, we're also requesting a concession for that. And then the two items that we're requesting a waiver for are the unit mix requirement and the off-street loading, to have a smaller stall size within the building. And that concludes our presentation. We'd love to take questions and comments.
Awesome. Thank you, Lily, for your presentation. And commissioners, any question, any comments? Commissioner Gesuni? Okay, Commissioner Henry, go ahead, please.
Yes, few questions. First, on the passenger, or sorry, on the loading space, is that intended as passenger loading, or is that intended as move-in and good loading?
For us, it's all types of loading. We're, and we can go back, but our thought is both on Forty-third and on within the building, we have different types of loading. We have, you know, loading and unloading for move-in. We will have deliveries and pickups. And then also, you know, with our seniors, sometimes there's transit options that come. So both stalls are for, it depends on the, on the need.
Okay. Did you consider a white curb on, on San Pablo in front of the, right in front of the entry? Because it looks like you would still have enough dimension for your aerial apparatus clearance.
So, so we talked to Department of Public Works about that, and because of the planned bus improvements that are to happen on San Pablo, that's really just not doable. But there will be further down on San Pablo a white zone that will be excess, that will be within a decent walk, a fair walking distance to the front door of our building.
Okay, thank you. Your rendering at the street level, it looks, it makes it look like CLT construction. Is that, that your intention?
Right now, we would love to create a warm, welcoming space at that ground level. Right now, that is our intent, intent to have that potential for mass timber. But I think it will all depend on, on lumber prices. I know that the costs are very challenging at this time, but yes, that's our intent.
Yep. We've seen some wild fluctuations in the price of wood, and we just don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're committed to a certain material and, and find out six months or a year later that, that cost will put us in a position where we can't afford it. So we really want to keep that flexibility. Our intent is to go that direction, but we need that flexibility.
Sure. Okay, thank you. On your plan, half of your two BRs had one bath, and half had two baths. Two baths is pretty unusual for Two baths is pretty unusual for affordable housing, two BRs. Is there, what is, what is the thinking? Why, why, why half with two baths?
You're saying, sorry, I'm going to go back to the plan. You're just saying why is half the two bedrooms have two bathrooms as opposed to two-bedroom, one bath?
Correct, yeah. Well, half of the two BRs are one-bedroom, are two-bedrooms, one-bath and half are two-bedrooms, two-baths. But I'm wondering either why the inconsistency or why, I mean, you know, like I say, two baths is pretty luxurious for a two-bedroom affordable housing unit.
So the intent here is that you can have a home live-in aid and that's part of why two bedrooms were included. And so in some instances in senior housing, people so that they can live independently for longer periods of time have live-in aids. And so I think the intention here was to allow that to be a much more comfortable situation for those individuals.
Okay, no, that's a good answer. Thanks. I mean, I guess the other answer I was wondering about was for the KUs. Sometimes you have two KUs who want to essentially have kind of an independent suite situation. So, okay, that's good, thank you.
That's also another possibility and allows us that flexibility with those two-bedroom units. With the transitional age use, there are multiple populations that could be served. And that is certainly a possibility as well.
Okay. And the last question I have is about the east edge, which is a big concern. What is the nature of the fence slash wall at the ground level, one? And two, what is the nature of screening from the second floor deck? What is the nature of the east edge of the second floor deck and screening from people looking down into the neighboring house?
Yeah, we've set back the building and we pull up the, one of the other. We've set back the building. You notice obviously that the podium level maximizes the footprint as nine foot away from the property line. Above, we are setting back the building further and then there's landscaping along in the courtyard. And as well as, oh, here it is. There's landscaping proposed in the courtyard.
It sort of gives a buffer away from the fence so that there isn't sort of, there aren't people looking directly into the neighboring backyards.
And what's the nature of the fence slash wall? What's the material? What's the treatment? I couldn't find it in the drawings.
I think right now we're proposing a wood fence, right here, you mean, separating?
Yeah, right, at the ground level. Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Henry. And we go with Commissioner Kitzoni.
Yes, I don't actually have any specific questions on this. I just comment. I wanted to say that I think that since the last study session, the refinements that you've done look nice. And I think this is a great project. I think that intergenerational housing, affordable housing along a really rich transit corridor is a great, great thing. And it looks beautiful and I think it's going to be a really valuable addition to the community. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kitzoni. We go with Commissioner Vex, please.
Hi, okay, couple of quick questions. The staff recommended the Emery Villa easement to ease passage over to the senior center. Is that something that you pursue?
So the, so that edge of the building, we need, we need that entire area for landscaping, for drainage and for treating the water. And so having an easement that is, for lack of better terms, mid-site isn't feasible because we need every inch of that to use for water treatment. And then, of course, if you did do any sort of passageway, it would have to be accessible and it would have to probably be concrete. And so then that would add to our C-three requirements and so that would change it. So yeah, effectively, any sort of easement between those, or passageway between those isn't feasible.
Did you consider instead of rooftop PV, a green roof?
I'm sorry, instead of a rooftop PV, what was the question?
A green roof. Was that something you considered?
Well, for us, it makes more sense to do the PV roof because it allows us an offset for operating cost. Because then we can use the solar as an offset for those, the shared amenities spaces for our electricity consumption.
I'm looking at your custom bike rack design. Have you gotten any feedback on that from cycle advocates, community, et cetera?
We are not proposing a custom design, at least in the, within the, within our long-term storage. These are cut sheets from Darryl Decker. That would be cool. We have thought about what this bike room looks like, but we haven't gone, I haven't gone into the nitty-gritty of designing our own rack.
Okay, that's all of my questions. Awesome. Any other commissioner? Okay, I don't see any raised hands. So I would put some comments on this project. This is a very exciting project. We appreciate your.
Mr. Dran?
Excuse me, sorry.
Public hearing. This is Charlie. Yes, it's not a public hearing, it's a study session. But we should open the floor up to public comments before the committee discusses it. Let me just read that. Now's the time for a public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted an online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature physical on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. I will now double-check my email to see if any more, if any online speaker cards have been submitted for this item. There were none the last time I checked, but just let me double-check again. No, I do not have any online speaker cards for this item. I also do not see any raised hands among the attendees. Therefore, I think it would be appropriate for you to close public comment at this point.
At this point, you are closing the public comments?
And now you can have commission discussion.
Okay.
Anna Lisa, were there commissioner discussion questions for this? Or was it just to get feedback?
It was just to get feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Any feedback? I have Commissioner Henry, please.
Okay. First off, I think it's a very good project. I'm, I think maximizing the height, maximizing the density in order to increase the availability of affordable housing is a very good strategy. Supports clearly the state goals and I think you've done it appropriately. And I think it's very interesting, this whole idea of intergenerational housing. It'd be interesting to hear in the future how well it's worked out. And I'd be really curious as to how that all works. So I think the overall program is great and the project is a good development. I do have a few comments that might be taken into account. Could you open up the plans, please, and go to the second floor plan? And then I will be also asking for the San Pablo facade drawing as well, so. So on the second floor plan, my question or maybe suggestion would be that the deck and the outdoor space is so narrow, you know, narrower than usually one likes to try and provide on this podium. I understand why the left and right edges of that space of the offices would want to be at that dimension. But would it be possible to pull back the classroom, five feet or something? One, that would give you protection because they would be recessed, protection from the rain. And in this case, I think even five more feet of depth will help you on that, on that deck. So just trying to provide more depth in that deck in order to make it more usable. Will you be looking at providing a built-in barbecue, for example, which oftentimes occurs on these projects? I would suggest that that's something you would consider. And again, additional depth would really help. And I would suggest that there be a screening, a material screening fence along that entire eastern edge where the terrorist occupant area occurs. And that should be like seven feet high. And this is because even though, you know, of course it's admirable, you have a setback. But frankly, people on that second floor deck are high enough that if they're able to look over the edge, they'd be looking right into that backyard of that neighbor. And I, you know, I appreciate the fact that it's a tall building for the density, but frankly, I feel a little bit sorry for that, for that neighbor. So I think landscaping will not, will not necessarily do it. I think what I try to do is to use like a perforated material or something that you can get some breeze through, but that would really cut down the view to that neighbor to almost zero. Then if you can go to the San Pablo facade, please. Okay, so I, I, I think this is a well-articulated building. I like the treatment of the deep recesses for the balconies and the syncopation where you pull back the studio units, I believe, in the pattern. But one thing I would suggest is right now, you can see you have a two, the top floor is recessed for the studios and you have a two recess and one recess and a two recess. I think it would probably be work with your idea a little bit stronger if you were to make the right-hand recess, a three-floor recess instead of a two. So it becomes a two-one-three. I think that'll reduce the symmetry and reduce the kind of regularity and create a stronger syncopation, which I believe is your intent, is to kind of have this kind of lively rhythm along the street. The second thing is that if, just if you look at this elevation, the south stair treatment to me is, it almost looks like another hand, another designer. It's a very different-looking treatment. Number one, the windows are almost square. The windows are highly symmetrical. You know, you have two and then one in the middle. And the rest of the building is not employing square windows. It's employing mostly a vertical rhythm, a rectangular pattern. It doesn't have the symmetry. So I would suggest you relook at how you treat those windows, both on the San Pablo facade as well as the north facade. Because I think, I think if, I think they take away from the impact of the rest of the elevation. And then on the south elevation, on the drawing above, I would suggest you enlarge the windows into the south stair. Because right now you've made those three sets of windows all the same, but the middle window, I believe, is, or is it maybe two of those windows? I forget. Anyway, the windows into the stair, I think having one set of larger windows on that facade would produce a little more interest and a little more variety of treatment. And frankly, it opened it up a little bit. It looks like a pretty solid space there. And so I think having a little bit more glass on that side would be, would be a good idea. I noticed that the staff had recommended moving the trash room to the street edge. I would suggest that, I would not support that. I think the trash is well-located now. It works for the residents to get to the trash chute. And I know that trash rooms work inside buildings when you have, particularly when you have the electric pallet jacks. It can quite easily move the dumpsters out to the street edge for, upon pickup day. So I think that's a feasible, very feasible location and I believe it's fine as it is. And then finally, in terms of the feedback on the waivers, I very much support the waivers and concessions. I think the increase in height, density, FAR are all appropriate and allow this project to succeed. So thank you very much, but I think it's quite a handsome, successful project.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Henry. And Commissioner Vex, please.
Yes, I want to echo a lot of the things that Commissioner Henry said. I do want to come back around to the southern elevation. Those are strong suggestions, but I think anything you can do to break up the monotony of that gray wall, this is the sort of thing that you see on a, on a large building like this and you just really wish a little bit more detail was added there because it gets quite monotonous. But another note is on the cycle racks. In case you like do seriously pursue custom designs, I just want you to know, someone who is not themselves a cyclist but has been on the B-PAC for three years, cyclists routinely give feedback that they do not want artistic cycle racks. I'm sure it depends on, I'm sure it depends on where and how they're being implemented. But since this isn't going through like all of the committees, I thought I would bring that forward. Overall, I think the other commissioners did a great job of providing other feedback. And I just want to say that when trying to do research for intergenerational housing and, you know, get a better idea of how it functioned, searching for it kept turning me back to Emeryville because that is like how much this project is leading right now. We haven't even built it and trying to research it, even though there are other excellent examples around the country. We're really doing a fantastic thing here. And, you know, as someone who has had a direct family member that has been through the foster system, it makes me really proud to see this coming up in my community. So I'd love to see it.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Vex. Any other commissioner? Okay, I don't see any raised hand. For myself, I should say thank you for this project. We hardly support this project and thank you for the time you spend. The only concern we see that other commissioner mentioned is the eastern side of the building that needs more attention. Maybe a bit more features or continuing the, with, can we share the screen for a second? I have an image that it can be like presented here.
You want to share the screen? Sure, go ahead. I think that probably will, or I, yeah, there you go.
Okay. So I will open this image. I just see a quick rendering, like continuing something, playing with this, make it more attractive, I think could help. Other than that, the only concern that I might have is like having more short-term bicycle stalls. Emeryville is going to be more pedestrian bicycle-based, so kids are going to come and visit their parents. I think they need more stalls there and also passenger loading zone. These are two comments I have. Other than that, I think this is an amazing project and we hardly support. Thank you so much. And Charlie, what's next? Should we close this item?
Yes, you can go ahead and close this item, Commissioner Dran. And I will note for the record that Vice Chair Simons has rejoined the meeting.
Awesome.
So I think at this point he can take over presiding. Thank you very much for stepping in. Much appreciated.
Awesome. So here.
My one-year-old has finally had some Tylenol and is now asleep and much, much, much happier. So all good news on the home front.
Awesome.
So Charlie, are we done with item nine point one? Are we moving on to nine point two or?
Yes, that is, that is correct. So the next.
I'm sorry, Charlie?
Yes, go ahead.
Were we not asking for a resolution, general?
Were we not asking for a general, a resolution, general plan conformity on forty-three-hundred San Pablo?
It is contained in the staff report. I don't believe we needed a separate resolution. Uh, Christie, did you want to comment on that? This is on general plan conformity for this project?
Give me one second.
Um, I'll just share with you, uh, Mr. Smalley, that I have consulted with, uh, the, uh, special counsel, Ms. Crowley, about this question. And it is contained in the staff report. The state law simply says the commission must issue a report on general plan conformity, and which is very vague language. And the staff report that the staff has prepared, that has been sent to the planning commission does include that, uh, conformity determination. So I've been advised that that is sufficient for the report that's required from the planning commission.
That works for me. I just didn't want you to miss a motion if you, if you were expecting.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. For those who don't know, this is Chad Smalley, the Deputy Director of Community Development and Overseer of the Economic Development and Housing Division. Are we good, Christie? Okay, thank you. Um, so Chair, I mean Vice Chair Simons, we are ready to move on to item nine point two, which is the Christie Avenue Mixed Use Project Study Session.
I think we should let the other applicant go.
Yes, I will.
Yes.
I will escort them out of the, uh, of the meeting.
Yep. Yep. Thank you to our, thank you to our applicant.
Uh, I think you also want to remove me from the meeting because this is the other item I'm recusing from.
Right.
Yes, yes.
And, and me too.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Who else is refused on this item?
Rod, I'm, I'm, I'm recused from the Christie Avenue, so the distance.
Right. Commissioner Gitzoni, you're also recused?
Yes, but for conflict because of, with my employer.
Okay.
So I'm removed altogether and then you paged me, I believe?
That's right. I'll send you a text when this item is over. And Commissioner Henry, I will, uh, move you to the attendee group so you can speak as a public, a member of the public if you wish to.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think, I think I've sorted everybody out now. Uh, you're still here. Maybe I thought, I thought I moved you. Hang on. All right. There we go. I think that's it then.
I'm still here though.
Wait, who? Who? Mr. Gitzoni, still here?
I'm still here.
Oh, well, you have to leave the meeting on your own.
Exactly. I leave on my own? Oh, okay, okay.
Yes. There you go. Okay. All right, let's see. So we still have one, two, three, four, five commissioners. Four commissioners. Right, four commissioners. All right, Miru, take it away.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Miru Desai, the project planner for this proposal. Uh, if you give me a minute, I will share my screen now. Uh, you can all see my screen at this time?
Mm-hmm. Yes, all right.
Okay, so this is the second study session for the Christie Avenue Mixed Use Project. And I believe Vice Chair Simmons mentioned that he wanted to see the questions ahead of the, uh, presentation and as well as at the end of the presentation. So just to, you'd be asked at the end of the presentation, uh, your opinion regarding the mix of users. Uh, the second question is that the proposal, uh, requires, uh, a use permit to allow more parking than the maximum and certain findings are to be made. So we would be asking, uh, the commission whether, uh, you are in any position to make that finding or if you need additional information. Uh, they'll, uh, the proposal is asking, uh, for, uh, bonus points by providing additional open space. So there'll be a question regarding, uh, certain calculations of open space. Uh, then, uh, there will be a question regarding if the commission is interested in use, uh, the app is interested in asking, uh, this project to obtain bonus points via public improvements. And the last one is any comments on design or any other issues. So with that, uh, in terms of the project site, it is at fifty-eight oh one Christie Avenue. Uh, the site area is three point seven six acres. Uh, it is, uh, as you can see, uh, the western perimeter is adjacent to I eighty and it's in the middle of, uh, what, you know, our town. Uh, the project will involve demolition of all existing buildings, which is the Wells Fargo Buildings and, uh, smaller other tenants, uh, on the second building. All of them will be removed. And, uh, and the construction, uh, would be of residential tower, uh, ninety-four units, a twelve-story, uh, R and D, uh, tower and a parking podium accommodating, uh, five hundred and sixty-six spaces and a new public park. So like I mentioned, uh, the commission saw this, uh, project, uh, at the first study session in January of this year. And, and there were several comments, uh, that were made by both staff and the commission. And the applicant has, uh, come and revised, uh, not so much the project proposal, but has revised the site planning, which I will get into in a minute. The proposal more or less remains the same, uh, slightly smaller, uh, four residential units less. Uh, R and D building has also become a little smaller, about thirty-nine thousand square feet smaller, uh, and the parking spaces provided have been reduced by about hundred and eighty-two, uh, spaces. So this was the previous site plan, uh, that the commission saw in January. And the orientation was that the blue building, uh, was towards the north. Uh, there would be three buildings to begin with, uh, three standalone buildings. One would be the R and D Tower on the north in blue. Uh, the other one would be the garage building, uh, and then a residential building fronting Christie and behind, uh, the garage building. Uh, the circulation was different. It was basically around the perimeter and that's where, uh, number of comments came. So now, uh, the current site plan is a little different. Uh, the orientation of the buildings have changed. This is technically one building. There will be a parking podium and on top of the parking podium would be the residential building. And then you, uh, towards the north so that, uh, it can enjoy the views of the water. And then the R and D building is towards the south. Uh, in terms of how the site planning ha, is working, I would like to show you, uh, one of the controlling things is the fire lane. This is a twenty-foot required fire lane, concrete twenty-foot, uh, uh, fire lane of, sorry, across the, uh, all circling, uh, the site. So this is a requirement. And then in terms of circulation, they are going to have, uh, this driveway that is going to align with the existing signal on Christie and Shellmount Way. In terms of circula, uh, in terms of just going back, uh, talking about this area, the western perimeter area, uh, what is happening here is in addition to the filing that I, uh, showed you earlier, it is also going to function for circulation purposes. And this is kind of a cross-section, uh, here. So what you're going to have is a, a five-foot sidewalk and then you have a twenty-four-foot, uh, two-way vehicular road. And then, uh, they are proposing this, uh, class one, uh, class one bike path, uh, with a width of twelve feet, with, uh, two feet on the sides and eight feet of, uh, right away. This kind of gives you how, uh, the sections of the building, as I mentioned, this is the parking podium. There is a partial, uh, below-ground level as well. And on top of the parking podium is this residential tower and, and this is the R and D, uh, tower. So like I mentioned, the height of the podium is, uh, about seventy-four feet. And then this sits ninety feet on top, so that achieves about hundred and seventy-six feet. And the height of the R and D Tower is two hundred and two feet. And this is the section going north and south, as you can see. So this is the circulation, vehicular circulation. The primary access will be through the driveway here. It'll go in and, uh, as you can see, it basically revolves around here and it can go back. There's a secondary, uh, access as well, which is showed in the dashed lines. Uh, onto Christie, it'll be right in and right out only. Uh, there is also an, uh, access easement, uh, between Denny's and the gas station, which can also potentially be used as a secondary access, uh, to reach Powell Street. Uh, this is, uh, how the trash service is, uh, how, how the waste is going to be held. Uh, this is the trash room in the R and D building and this is the trash room in the residential building. They will be using the main driveway and they will have to reverse in, uh, uh, the trucks would have to reverse in to collect the trash, both for the R and D building, both for the R and D building as well as the residential building. Uh, similarly, uh, in terms of delivery and loading, uh, the residential building, this is the, where the loading will occur for movements. And these are the loading spaces for the R and D building. There is also a short-term drop-off, uh, and as well as a delivery inside, uh, right here. This kind of shows you, uh, the bicycle, uh, how the bicycle will operate, bicycles will operate. The fire lane that goes here will also substitute as a bicycle path. And then they are proposing, like I showed you, uh, a twelve-foot, uh, bike lane as well. Uh, the blue shows, uh, the long-term bicycle parking for the residents and this is for, uh, the tenants of the R and D building. The red here is the bus stop. And this kind of shows you how the pedestrian, uh, circulation would occur. This is the preliminary massing diagram as seen from Christie Avenue. Uh, the design and the materials are still being developed, so I'm going to let the applicant, uh, walk you through, uh, their design ideas, uh, but, uh, and I'm just going to show this massing diagram for now. So in terms of conformity to, uh, planning regulations, uh, there's a residential density. Uh, at the site, the base is eighty-five with bonus density that can be increased to hundred and seventy. Uh, what they are proposing is twenty-five units per acre, so they are well within, uh, the range, the base density range. Uh, in terms of FAR, uh, the base is three and the bonus is six. And they are far below that, uh, in, and it's three point three-five, uh, so they're within base FAR as well. Uh, I'm sorry, they're not within the base FAR. They are a little over the base FAR and will require twelve bonus points. Uh, the height, the base height is seventy-five feet and anything above that, it's unlimited. And, uh, the R and D Tower, which is the taller of the two, uh, structures, uh, is two hundred and two feet and therefore the project will require a hundred points for height. Bonus points. Uh, so half the bonus points are required to come out of, uh, affordable housing. So, uh, there is a residential portion, so seventeen percent of the total units have to be affordable units. So this calculates to sixteen units. And per code, uh, in terms of income, income levels, it would be four at very low income, five at low and seven at moderate income levels. For the non-residential portion, uh, our code requires then to pay two times, uh, the affordable housing impact fee. So the current impact fee for R and D is about five hundred dollars per square foot. So the increased foot, uh, fee would be twice that, so a little over ten feet. Uh, so at current rates for this project, uh, this would calculate to about a little over, uh, four million dollars. Obviously, whatever the fees are in effect at the time of building a permit issuance, that's what would apply. But if they were to get a building permit today, this is what they would need to pay, uh, for, uh, housing, uh, affordable housing impact fee. The remaining fifty points are required to come out of community benefits. Uh, the project is proposing, uh, to get the, uh, bonus points by providing additional public open space. So this means, uh, that if they want fifty points, then they need to provide fifteen percent of the site area, which is about twenty-five thousand square feet, as additional open space. So which is basically open space that is not otherwise required by code, uh, at the site. So these are, uh, how the open space bonus points are, uh, going to be, uh, how the open space bonus points and other open space, uh, are going to be calculated or seen. So what you see in dark green, so it's this, what's, uh, identify the south zone, uh, north zone, and then, uh, this, this far portion of the fire lane and then this bike path. These areas in dark green are what the applicant is proposing as, uh, as additional open space that would qualify for, uh, fifty bonus points. So what I would like to add at this time is that this multi, uh, this bike path along the western perimeter, uh, will be adjacent to, it's not quite shown here, but it will be adjacent to what is a twenty-four-foot wide driveway that will be used for vehicular circulation, that will include cars, moving trucks and waste haulers. Provision of this path was suggested because the city's active, uh, transportation plan that is being developed at this time, uh, is proposed to include a continuous pedestrian bicycle path along the eastern side of the freeway, connecting multiple properties for a north-south connection all the way from Sixty-Fifth Street, uh, to Powell Street. However, this path, uh, will not be functional until properties to the north and the south are redeveloped and the connection provided. So the inclusion of this path as a way of obtaining bonus point that is meant to provide community benefits may not be appropriate as neither the city nor the developer has control over the timeline of completion of this north-south connection. This bike path, uh, which also functions as fire access, could potentially be included in the bonus point calculation, provided that the path has some kind of treatment that would be acceptable to the fire department and would function as an interesting open space that would attract people. In terms of, uh, the unit mix and the family-friendly design guidelines, uh, we, the requirement is that the fifty percent of the units need to be two and, two and three-bedroom units, of which only fifteen can, of which, of which only fifteen needs to be three-bedroom and only ten can be studios. Uh, so you can see the breakdown, uh, of the unit mix in, in front of you and they do comply, uh, with our requirements. In terms of parking, this site lies in the transit hub overlay that reduces all required parking by fifty percent. So in terms of the residential, uh, the required is fifty-eight. They are proposing within the range, uh, so they comply with the residential parking requirements. Uh, in terms of the commercial component, the R and D, uh, the range is, uh, zero to four hundred and fifty-four. And what they're proposing is a little bit more than that, uh, five hundred and ten spaces. So the project does need a use permit to allow more parking for commercial use. So the findings that the commission would need to make, uh, in order to allow, uh, more parking for the commercial users is to demonstrate that additional parking is required to meet the anticipated demand and that the provision of more parking will not adversely affect transit, bicycle and pedestrian access to site and will not result in an over-dependence on cars. In order to facilitate, uh, making these findings, the applicant has, uh, provided a parking, uh, study, which was attached to your, uh, staff report. And this is also a parking study that has, that was used, uh, for, to assess, uh, parking for Embry Station Overland Project, uh, that was approved last month. Uh, so just as an FYI. Bicycle parking, uh, required residential short-term is five. Uh, they are showing, uh, an unspecified number in the park area. Uh, long-term, uh, they're required, uh, ninety-four spaces. They do have a parking, a long-term parking, uh, bike room inside the residential building, so the details will come later in terms of the type and of course, uh, showing that they have at least ninety-four. Uh, commercial short-term is eighty-two. It's not shown at this time. Uh, the long-term is also eighty-two and they are showing a bike room within, uh, the commercial building and the details of, you know, uh, exact, uh, the, the type and the location and other specificities, uh, will come, uh, down the road. Uh, just as an FYI, there, uh, there is no transit hub overlay reduction for bicycle parking since the intent of this overlay zone is to encourage alternative transportations, uh, such as bicycles. Uh, so there are, the code also requires open space, uh, requirements. So, uh, the open spaces that are applicable for this project include residential open space, uh, which are then divided as private and common. So the private, uh, residential open space would be things like, uh, balconies and Uh which are then uh divided as private and common, so the private uh residential open space would be things like balconies and patios. In common open space would be things like, you know, community rooms or even a uh uh rooftop garden areas. That would be meant for the residents of the buildings only. Uh for the commercial component, uh they are required by code to provide five percent of the gross flow area. As common open space and this would be for the employees. Out of this five percent, a small portion, that's one percent, needs to be privately owned public open space for a project of this size. Uh then uh on this site, the general plan designates this as other park opportunity site. And it calls for a public park of at least one-half acre. The fourth kind of uh open space that applied to this project is the additional open space. Uh this is the way that the applicant has proposed to obtain their bonus points. Uh provision of this additional open space is optional, as the applicant also can choose to obtain the required bonus points. Through other seven categories that are provided in our regulations. So the one, two, three, they are required to provide and fourth is not uh, it's not a requirement. So looking at uh what they're required to provide moving from right to left. Uh this is the residential uh uh open space that they're providing on their roof uh for their residents. This is, these are the private in yellow are the private open spaces. Uh and they are coming in form of patios or uh in terms of balconies. And this green uh is also a common open space for the tenants of the R and D building. And this is on uh on on top of the garage. So here, in the light green, is the half acre public park that they are required. This in lighter green is the porpoise that they are required. The blue is just by retention, by retention areas and the dark green, as I mentioned, are what they're proposing. As uh additional open space for bonus points. So this uh project was reviewed by B P A C uh at their May second meeting. Uh representative from Bike East Bay offered to work with the applicant as they further refined the bicycle infrastructure. And suggested that the bicycle parking spaces go beyond the city's requirements. The committee generally liked the project and provided some suggestions that included the following, the use of bolids instead of gates on the fire lane. Uh to allow bicycles in elevators, especially the residential elevator. To consider including micro-mobility infrastructure to allow for scooters and bikes. And inclusion of some kind of retail cafe space uh to activate park space. The committee also mentioned that the Powell-Christie intersection was one of the most problematic from the safety point of view. And suggested consideration of treatments that would make intersection safe for pedestrians. Uh in terms of staff comments, uh at the January Planning Commission staff had a number of comments. Uh most, a good portion of them have been addressed by uh changing of the site planning. Uh so some of the remaining comments that we have at this time is regarding the loading and the trash vehicular circulation diagrams. Uh they need to provide more information in terms of the turning radar to assess whether the proposal will work there. At this stage, there seem to be uh conflicts that might occur, especially with the bike path that is also adjacent to uh. Uh the back of the house uh driveway. Uh Public Works staff uh also recommends relocating and enhancing the existing transit stop along Christie uh to onsite bus pullout. Uh additional, additional information is needed regarding the north-southeastman uh running between the southern property line and Powell Street. Between uh Denny's and the gas station. Uh we need more information regarding its width and usability for uh use for the project. And if the easement language allows the applicant to use this connection as a secondary access uh to Powell Street. Then the easement itself would need to be improved to include uh safety features and appropriate enhancements at pedestrian crossings. Uh there's also a suggestion to consider using bike lane or equivalent for managing secure public bicycle parking. Uh the applicant also needs to develop a parking plan that shows in detail how the residential and the commercial parking will be accessed. And also clarify how the parking layout will be controlled uh within the parking garage. So these are just more details uh on operations. Uh this was also a comment that we made last time is the parking garage should be designed to be adaptable. So that can be converted into non-parking uses. Uh sh- should the parking demand be reduced over time uh in next, you know, twenty years or thirty years or even less. In terms of uh bonus points, uh so we would like, the staff would like uh the applicant and the commission to consider that. Uh to obtain the bonus points by providing public improvements that would benefit the community. We note that the approximate valuation of the project uh is three hundred and thirty-five million, this was the number provided by the applicant. Uh which calculates to about uh sixteen a million if they were to obtain all fifty bonus points. Uh while public improvements, so this is basically the monetization of those fifty bonus points. And uh the Public Works has identified the following potential projects uh that would be beneficial to the community. Uh it could be constructing city standard curb, better sidewalk, landscaping and lighting on Christie Avenue between Shell Mount Way and Sixty-Fourth Street. So this is beyond their project franchise. Uh power and Christie traffic signal improvements to create uh flashing yellow de- beacons. Enhancement potentially of the I eighty Powell Street overpass, uh including gateway signage and beautification projects. And there's also uh something called that the city is working on is the Emeryville Loop Project. Uh which is centered around five intersections circling near the public market, Powell Street Plaza, and north end of the Bay Street Mall. And the goal of this project is to provide a safe, low-stress biking and walking routes uh to work and shopping destinations. Should the commission feel uh that there is an interest, that you have an interest in exploring. Whether what precisely public improvements that could be applicable, then staff would provide more information on uh. On more concrete uh improvements. Just to give you a context in terms of what other projects have provided, uh when it comes to bonus points, this is a relatively new. Uh concept and there is only one project that uh has used bonus point system. And that is under construction and that is the Sherwin-Williams uh project. It is a little different project, it's a more residential and a little R and D, so it's a flip side of that. And the project valuation uh was about hundred and forty million. Uh which translated to, if you monetize that for bonus points, would be about seven million. And the way the Sherwin-Williams is providing community benefits is uh by providing art gallery. By providing a shuttle to West Oakland for five years. And a whole bunch of public improvements along the vicinity of the site. Uh either be it sidewalk improvements or whether it's uh lighting or whether it is undergrounding utilities. So this is sort of to give you an idea of uh what other projects uh have done. And Sherwin-Williams also had a requirement of a public uh park at their site for slightly different reasons. And they also uh had to extend uh the Greenway that runs along their uh western perimeter uh property line along uh the railroad. In terms of next steps, uh it's going to get reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Committee and as well as the Housing Committee. Uh they are potentially additional uh Planning Commission study sessions as uh the project, the the design gets further uh developed. And we will be doing an environmental document for C Q compliance uh once the project description and the site circulation are finalized. So in terms of the questions before the commission, like I mentioned in the beginning, uh is the commission satisfied with the proposed use? Uh proposed mix of users. Uh this was a question we asked uh last time as well and uh and it hasn't changed too much, as I mentioned. Uh and at that time, the commission uh was generally okay with the mix of users and we are just trying to confirm that it still is. Uh the other is parking, uh the project provides fifty-six uh more parking spaces than the maximum permitted. Uh and in order to make the findings, a parking study by Kimberly-Hawn, like I'd mentioned, has been submitted. Is there, uh of obviously this parking study will be peer-reviewed uh by the city's transportation assessment. Uh but if is, i- if the commission thinks that there is an additional information that you would like in order to make the findings. That uh that would help you to make the finding, the second finding especially. That the project uh will, the provision of the parking will not adversely affect the transit, bicycle, and pedestrian access to the site. And will not result in over-dependence on orders. So any uh additional information that you need from the applicant uh in order to make that finding uh is what we are looking for. Uh does the commission support the additional open space as one way of uh obtaining bonus points for this project? Uh and if yes, does the commission think that the bike path or the multi-use path should be included? In the public open space calculations for obtaining bonus points? Does the commission agree with staff that additional treatment would be needed for the fire lane to be included as open space? Uh does the commission believe that a portion of the bonus points should include public improvements as suggested by staff? And last, uh any comments that the design, uh that the mission may have on the design concept. Uh including the recommendations for the public park or any other issues uh would be welcome. So that concludes my presentation and uh if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer. The applicant also uh does have a a presentation for you.
Okay, thanks so much, Maru. Um are there any questions from commissioners? Okay, well, I have one, sorry, David, or sorry, Commissioner, it's good for you.
Yeah, I was actually wondering, I, because I was looking at the changes from um last time. So the residential units went down. Um and it looks like the building, things just kind of shrunk and I'm wondering, maybe the applicant can speak to. What motivated that reduction in um residential units? And uh also the uh building size.
Yeah, I think it's, this question is best answered by the applicant.
Perhaps we should wait until after the applicant's presentation and ask.
Sure, that's fine.
That be all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, so if there are other, if there are another other questions, I have a question. So um I'm really excited about this bike path behind the project. Um and I'd really like to make it happen. Can we talk about other projects like this in Emeryville that we've had to assemble slowly over time? What's kind of the city's best practice and how this is done? Like, it seems like kind of a bad idea to not strike while the iron's hot. But also other parts that aren't done, like how have we done other things like this over time?
I- in terms of uh getting something like a bike path that goes through several properties?
Yeah.
So this is the approach that we have used, that, you know, so for example, wherever a redevelopment proposal comes. So for example, on, in this area, uh you may recall that the atrium Longfellow uh was being redeveloped. So at that time, they were also showing the path. And that was because of this reason that the A T P is, does visualize this bike, north-south bike path. So it is by piecemeal by piecemeal. So that is why I mentioned that neither the city, the city doesn't really have a control over when, you know, the the missing links will get redeveloped. So so a- as in the atrium Longfellow site, we uh requested them to uh have that bike path along their western perimeter. And that's what we are doing uh for this site as well.
I can add a little bit of uh additional context. Not in this part of the city, a little bit different situation. But the the uh Emeryville Greenway, especially the port, well, actually throughout the entire city. Has kind of been built piece by piece as development came along. And when the Sherwin-Williams project is finally complete, uh hopefully next year sometime. The Emeryville Greenway will finally be complete, all the way from the south end of the city to the Berkeley border. But that was done basically block by block. The first portion of it was built by Pulte Homes back in the early two thousands, when they built the Liquid Sugar Project. And also later, the City Limits Project. And then uh they also built the Glass House Project. And with each of those projects, they built a little section of the Greenway. And then subsequently, um I think a portion of it was built between uh Powell and Fifty-Ninth. And then that was extended all the way through the block by Wareham when they built the Emery Station uh Greenway Project, appropriately named. And now, uh of course, Sherwin-Williams is building the park at the southern end. Fort Lanning Park is also a part of it. And Pellidoo Park was built by the city. So, you know, piece by piece by piece and eventually you get the Greenway through the entire city. As I say, it's a little bit different because the city owns all of that land, or most of it. Um but it was done by, most of it was done by private developers as their developments proceeded.
Related to that, sorry, Henry, I'm just, because the question is whether we're considering. That segment of bike path that may or may not connect in however many years. Whether that's open space, right? Um what's the consequences of that decision, right? If that's not open space, uh does that remove uh bonus points? How does that work?
Yeah, so just to, uh yeah, let me try and explain this again. Uh so th- that bike path, uh we suggest, we have asked all developers on this site to provide that uh bike path. In order to, you know, uh in order that in the future, we will have a north-south bike path, right? So that was the reason why uh staff suggested that they do that. However, what they are uh asking for is to consider this bike path. As open space for bonus points. Bonus points are to be given, half the fifty bonus points are for community benefits. And our code has a different ways of obtaining uh uh bonus points. And one of them is through additional open space, but there are other things like providing, you know, additional family-friendly units. Uh providing um uh money to small business funds. So the reason why staff is, does not feel comfortable designating this bike path for bonus points. Is because it will not be functional uh till the portions to the north and to the south. Uh can be connected and can actually be used. So it will simply be a path to, at this point, to, you know, it's just there to, in the middle of, to nowhere, so to speak. So does that constitute community benefits? Uh since we do not know the timing of when uh the north and the south portion of the bike, uh you know, bike path would be constructed.
Maybe I can rephrase my question. Yeah, no, I understand the the greater context. I'm just saying, what's the consequence for the applicant if that is not considered? That square footage, that narrow strip is not considered the open space?
Let me take a shot at answering that question. Um i- in order to approve development bonus points, there's a section of the code that talks about it. And the Planning Commission or City Council, depending on who the decision-makers are, in this case, this is a Planning Commission approval, unless it gets appealed to the City Council. So one of the things you have to find in order to approve development bonus points is that they are appropriate in this case. And that they will be of a a real benefit to the community. Now, just because a particular category of things are listed in the table of potential community benefits. And there's a formula for how many points you get for doing such and such. That doesn't mean that the commission has to automatically grant those bonus points. It's uh e- even if it seems to meet the criteria, if you feel that those particular, that particular community benefit. Maybe isn't appropriate in that case or wouldn't provide a tangible benefit to the community. Then you don't have to approve those bonus points for that community benefit. You can tell the applicant, you need to find something else to get your bonus points for. So it's really kind of up to the commission to decide if you think this, in this case, this bike path is appropriate for the bonus points. And if you don't, then we would advise the applicant to find something else.
Okay, so Charlie, I think my question is, so, but the bike path is going to happen regardless, right? Because they have to put in a fire lane. The question is really, do we give them kind of double credit for bonus points? Is that, is that right?
Oh yeah, they're asking for uh bonus points for open space.
Okay, got it.
And they are including the bike path as part of their open. And they are including the bike path as part of their open space.
Got it, okay, thank you. Um Commissioner Wax?
Okay, hi. Um, okay, so I have a question about, so we have a, we have a sun study in here, and this question is for staff, um because we, you know, are adjacent here to um, you know, some development opportunities, some of which are already rolling. Um will the presence of this open space and the presence of the the park between the two towers, how might that constrain massing? Like, what are our obligations as far as, like, if we start getting uh proposed massing that might cast a shadow on there? What kind of problems might that cause for us in the future?
Are you saying that uh, that, are you saying that the shadows? If there are shadows, I mean, there will be shadows studies done. And I think that we can, we'll be providing that to give you an idea of, you know, uh how the shadows will affect. So uh, so in terms of, so there, there, there's going to be trade-offs, right? That that's the way to think about this. In terms of uh, if you, if you change the location of the park so that it minimizes uh shadow, for example, then it may be, uh we may run into other things that it needs to be near the uh the freeway, and then there is a noise issue, right? So it's it's about trade-offs. And this is where they have decided uh that uh that it meets in terms of how to access the buildings as, and to make the vehicular circulation work along with the uses, including the park. I don't know whether that answers your question or not, but.
I I think I'm doing bad at asking questions tonight. Um I'm trying to think about this in terms of future developments because we have, we have them in the pipeline, we have an RFP out. Um and I'm trying to figure out, since we're kind of flying blind here, and we can't do a sun study with massing that's not there yet, but is future massing, how to, like, what problems might we encounter um once we approve an open space and park here? And then that gets built, now we have stuff being built across the street, and we say, well, we're now constrained on that. At what point do we reach that, that level is what I'm curious about? And what might be our our obligations regarding that with future developments uh across the street and near this site?
Well, since we don't know what's going to go across the street, there is really no, not much we can do other than look at each project at that point of time that comes to you. So once you approve this project and it gets built, uh and then you get fifty eight, you know, the kitty corner site, uh then you are going to look at that project uh in context of what is built around or is getting built around. So there's really no way to, you know, I mean, to to guess what redeveloped projects on potential sites will be in the future and their impacts on this park if the building is tall.
But theoretically, um we may have to tell a developer that they need to reduce or move massing based on the shadows that would cast on this park, right?
Oh, but then the other project comes, yes, but you can potentially make that comment.
I would note, though, uh shadow studies, of course, are informational. And the shadows vary by time of day and by day of year. In December, pretty much every building casts shadows everywhere. In uh, in June, at noon, the shadows are very short, even from a very tall building. Um but also, uh there's kind of varying opinions as to whether shadows are good or bad or just neutral.
I like shadows.
Uh, yeah, right. I think, you know, in this area, we tend to think of shadows as being bad because it's foggy here most of the time, cold and foggy, and shadows just make it colder uh if you're not sitting in the the sun. On the other hand, if you're out in, say, Walnut Creek, or it's hot all the time, shadows are not such a bad thing because they provide shade and they help you get cool. So, you know, there's trade-offs. So I think we have to think of these shadow impacts and shadow studies as just kind of an informational item for, to to inform the commission's future decisions, but not necessarily a make or break kind of a thing.
Okay, but we're not going to run into a a situation where we might just, like, legally be obliged to remove some massing because it's going to cast a shadow on this, it'll be something that we have judgment over?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay. Um my other question, um I believe the slide said among the possible um uh public improvements was the Christie Loop. Did I get the way that was named right? Is is that the series of, like, one-ways?
Yes, that's the, yes, that's the Emeryville Loop. I I believe that project was, came in front of the B-PAC and the Transportation Committee, so that's the one that, yeah.
Okay, and if if the applicant were to use that for bonus points, um what what would they be doing in that scenario?
Right, so so we are, you know, because the applicant is proposing only to obtain their bonus points via open space. If the commission provides direction that you are interested in exploring uh what uh public improvements would look like, then staff would come back to you uh with more concrete uh projects uh to choose from. But at this time, uh it is, you know, we are looking for your direction before we do uh provide you with uh real projects.
I'm very interested in that, yeah.
I assume we can, we can um give that feedback once we're we're done with the developer's presentation and all of that.
Yeah, that's the appropriate time to give that feedback.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions from commissioners? Great, well, let's move on to the developer's presentation then.
Good evening, everyone. Uh I think we're going to start sharing our screen. Thank you, Suzanne. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh so thanks, Maru, and thank you, city staff, commissioners, and community members for your time tonight. Welcome to the new commissioners as well. Uh my name is Lauren Kraus, Vice President and Head of West Coast Development for Oxford Properties. As Maru mentioned, we're here before your first study session, our second one, to hear comments on some of the revisions and updates on our project. Also, I hope that some of the information in our presentation addresses a few of the comments and questions outlined by Maru previously. Uh next slide, please. Uh, okay, um maybe one more, Suzanne. Sorry about that. I should have advanced that previously. All right, here's the context of our, of our site. Next slide, please. So here is a summary of our guiding principles, and I'll just highlight a few that continue to be kind of our our north stars um of the project. And so first, providing mixed-income housing, near employment opportunities, enhancing bicyclist and pedestrian safety and connection, creating a new, meaningful, open, public space. And finally, a robust and progressive sustainability strategy that has informed all of our decision-making. As Maru mentioned, we most recently came to the planning commission in January and have been hard at work over the past six months. In addition to the study session, in January, we've conducted two community meetings and a B-PAC meeting. In these conversations, we've heard a number of comments about massing, architecture, open space, and pedestrian and cyclist experiences, and have listened by modifying our project. Next slide, please, Suzanne. On the left, you can see the the prior design, and then on the right, here is our current design, which highlights some of these changes. The most significant change we've made is to switch the R and D building to the south of the site and the residential building to the north on top of the parking garage. This transition accomplishes a number of important improvements. First, co-locating the new residential homes towards existing residential uses. Uh there's less massing towards the north of the site, which helps uh with shade and shadow impacts, which Commissioner Wax was um was was pointing out as a, as a consideration. Uh and finally, a significantly larger public park and more generous and activating bicycle and pedestrian experience. In the questions prior to our presentation, there were a few comments raised about the validity of the bicycle path for bonus points. So I'm sure we'll hear, hear more about that um in the questions. But wanted to mention that the enhanced bicycle path was suggested as a community benefit by B, by the B-PAC um in the B-PAC meeting. And it does, in fact, assist cyclists in avoiding the intersection of Christie and Powell Streets. Uh additionally, Commissioner, Commissioner Mora asked about the size of the R and D use and residential use. So we reduced the size of both of these uses, primarily so we could increase the size of the park and accommodate the requested massing changes from the previous study session in January. Uh finally, as a reminder, we're providing ninety-four residential homes comprised of seventy-eight market rate and sixteen affordable homes, uh or seventeen percent of the total residential homes as as affordable with a mix of moderate-low and very-low uh income rental rates. In addition to the sixteen affordable homes, we'll be paying approximately four-point-three million dollars in affordable housing fees. Locating housing near jobs, amenities, and transit in mixed-use income and lo- locating near jobs, amenities, and transit in mixed-income buildings improves residents' lives and encourages more equitable neighborhoods. Finally, we've heard continued concerns over the mass of the R and D building and parking count. We've responded by reducing the size of the R and D building, as mentioned previously, and removing an entire level of parking, significantly reducing the number of parking spaces from seven-hundred-and-forty-eight to five-hundred-and-sixty-six or almost a twenty-five percent reduction in parking space count. I'm going to turn it over to Peter Buffington with our design team to get into some of the details of our revised plan. Thanks again for your time tonight.
Thanks, Lauren. Um it's nice to be here and thanks for taking time to review our project. Um we're really excited about the design of um the Christie Street project. So we've prepared um several progress renderings that help to describe the project um from top to bottom. And um it really, I'll start with the sort of primary massing elements. There are three elements in the project. The parking garage, uh which really serves in this iteration as a base for the residential building. The research and development building itself, which has a gently wrinkled glass facade. And of course, the residential building sits atop the garage now and um kind of uh has a gentle sort of presence on top of the garage now. The other part, which is really um essential to the project, is the public park at street level. And David Walker will talk a little bit about this shortly. Uh next slide, please. So this slide and the following slide um both take the same viewpoint, but um we've done something where we actually wanted to show you all the full-grown trees that make up uh much of the park in the sort of urban forest. And these are very coarse, and I know that when David gets into the um landscape a little bit more in detail, he'll have much better imagery for that. But this particular image just shows you what the park will look like uh when the trees are full grown. Let's jump to the next slide. Uh so this is exactly the same view, um and for clarity, we've removed the tree. So from this view, um to the left of the image is the south of the project. And um if you were to walk along the face of the garage at grade level, um on the far south, you'd have the R and D lab, uh sort of um lobby area, that you see sort of the wooden space, and then the entry to the garage. And then you'll have a small cafe, retail spot, and then you'll have, uh as you move north along that lower facade, you'll have actually the residential lobby. And all the way to the far north, um the right-hand lower corner of the garage would be bike parking and maybe a mechanic's space for bicycles. Uh next slide, please. So um one of the questions that did come up um was about the exterior systems and materials, and I thought we'd just touch on this a little bit. So um the research and development building is composed of a glass curtain wall system assembled with both transparent and opaque panels, of which the quantity and distribution are driven by orientation, energy performance, and a desire for daylight autonomy or natural light inside the the buildings. The residential building is built with both glass panels and glass-fiber reinforced concrete panels and composed of a horizontal lintel at each floor and loosely organized thin vertical members to provide highly transparent and great views out of the windows. The garage itself is concrete with brick, we're going to call that Emeryville brick, and um metal screens and planters, which are um scattered around the facade of the garage to help provide a a very delicate nail. Uh next slide, please. So um this is a view from across the freeway looking to the east. So um you can kind of see the the, um on the upper left is the residential building, sitting atop the garage. And between the residential building and the research and development building to the right is a rooftop garden, which is really intended for the life sciences tenant in the R and D building. Uh the garage, you can see with screening and limited planting, um and really serves as the base of the building. And then on the right is the R and D building, which illustrates this large, gentle wrinkle um of facade geometry and also the delicate quality of glass and shadow box and the shade systems on the building. Uh next slide, please. Um so in addition to uh the performance-driven facades, our lead goal target includes, you know, all-electric buildings, both for the uh research and development and the residential building, a shared central plant and waste heat recovery, um a resilient design for sea-level rise, a green roof for water infiltration, and a habitat environment, along with um native drought-resistant planting and bioswells. And um I think the next two slides, we're going to skip, but let's jump to to these. So I think Maru did a great job of explaining the bonus points, and I know there will be more discussion about this. And the last slide for me is the open space calculations, which Maru also dug into. But the one thing I did want to mention was that on this, the far-left side of the um figure to the left, the ground-level diagram shows the bike path and the bike meetup area. And when David Walker gets into the um design of the the landscape, you'll see how all of these spaces actually connect and um bring bicycle riders from Powell Street up along the west side and all the way over to Christie. So um you'll get an understanding of kind of how we treated that area. So with that, I think we could jump to the next slide, and um I'll pass this on to Ben Hui, and he can talk a little bit about site access. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Peter. Um yeah, so before you hear is the revised vehicle circulation. Uh this was as a result of comments received from the city and previous uh planning commission meeting. Um we've revised the vehicle access to use the existing traffic signal at Christie and Shell Mount, as Maru had mentioned before. Uh this is shown in the red arrows, uh provides access directly to the parking garage and the uh drop-off area within the garage. And the perimeter is now, as shown in the orange, is this uh fire access to the north. Um and then at the bottom, the southeast corner of the site, it's just a right-in, right-out um access off to Christie Avenue. And then there is that easement access on Powell Street as well, which is a right-in, uh right-out as well. Um the vehicles, um using the traffic signal, um can enter into the garage. They can um use the R and D drop-off and the residential drop-off in a counterclockwise fashion through the parking garage. Uh or they can go into the parking garage itself, which is denoted by the P. And the um, and the uh vehicle uh exit for this is again through the primary access, is through the traffic signal at Shell Mount and Christie. Next slide. The next, we have a bicycle circulation and as mentioned before, providing a protected bicycle path, which is in the dark blue on the west side of the site that goes more south. Uh I think it was mentioned before that this could potentially be a fire lane, and that's incorrect. The bicycle path will actually be at an elevated um uh different uh elevation than the uh the boat, the roadway with, the the vehicle path. And so it won't be used for the fire lane. Um and that also provides um protection for bicyclists against um any of the truck circulation in the rear back there and and the the trash service. Um this uh bicycle path is uh needed today. It would provide um bicyclists an alternative route to uh traversing through the intersection of Powell Street and Christie Avenue. As folks have mentioned, and B-PAC has mentioned, it's a, it's a dangerous intersection for pedestrians and bicyclists. And so this would allow um bicyclists to avoid using Christie Avenue um from Powell Street to Shell Mount Way and connect to the future um bicycle lane uh to the northeast. Um, next slide. And so there's also uh mentioned by Maru uh regarding bicycle parking. Um here, we actually do show the provided bicycle parking. Um within the residential, uh we're proposing uh one-hundred-and-eight uh bicycle parking spaces uh compared to the ninety-eight required. So uh in excess of required, and that does include some cargo spaces for uh larger bikes. Um for public parking, uh we're also exceeding or meeting um the, exceeding the residential and meeting the R and D public bicycle parking. And then for R and D parking, um we are providing ninety-two spaces compared to the ninety required. And some of that is also um the cargo spaces. And then in the images, the, just to the right, it shows where these are located. Uh in the residential, it's in the northeastern portion of the site. Um the public bicycle parking is denoted in dark blue, and the residential um private spaces are in the uh, in the gold. And then for the R and And then for the R&amp;D, it's in the southeast corner where the bicycle storage, and that's denoted in the purple. Next slide. Lastly, we mentioned vehicle parking before. Just wanted to reiterate that we had reduced the parking count from 748 spaces to 566 spaces, as Lauren had mentioned previously, almost 25% reduction. This still does exceed the required spaces of 515, and so we did a parking study to show that the man would exceed the number of required spaces by 482 spaces. However, that ends only requesting additional 51 spaces, so much less than the actual parking demand. And the parking demand for the R&amp;D is based off of the Emery Station parking study, and the parking demand for the residential is based off the IT parking generation. And just last one, note that the parking rates are similar to other developments within the downtown. And I think next is David Walker with us here.
Hi. Thanks for letting us come back and talk to you again about the revised site plan. I wanted to start with this image here, which really changed our thinking about the park after the couple of community meetings that we had. There were a lot of people in the community that were talking about less structure in the park, like the fact that maybe dog parks aren't used so much, but the open space was really where the dogs were being used in the park up the street on Christie. And there was a strong desire from several people to create a kind of natural refuge, a park that has a natural refuge, like the park over on Hollow Street near the old Chiron Site, which we actually did years and years ago. It has the big redwood growth. So I use these images to start to describe the feeling that we're trying to achieve with the general image that you see when you move into Emeryville as kind of the gateway site coming off of Powell moving into this neighborhood. Next slide, please. So just to go through the plan in some detail, you've seen this. One of the most important things that I just left off with was this red arrow and the idea of maximizing the view from Powell and Shellmount Street. We have limited access along Christie, and we've been trying to make the park feel as large as possible with that frontage. As you know, the frontage is sort of blocked to the north because of the FedEx property, which is currently a parking lot, not so attractive. And so we're trying to do something that will help that situation out, as well as some of the existing buildings to the north. So what we're trying to do here in the park design, the big picture, is to create a deep naturalistic space that is formed by tall conifer forests of either redwoods or Canary Island pines, pineus canariensis, to form a kind of backdrop woods, and that will contrast the open space that's in the middle. So you're looking through, your first image is looking down a kind of long glade at this park that goes deep into the site. So a couple of highlights. In front of the R&amp;D building, we've got a narrow space, but we've planted that area with these pine groves so that it frames both sides of the park. And we're creating, we're hoping to create a terrace out there that is for the R&amp;D folks and potentially a cafe that spills out onto that corner. The other thing, the other major change from before is that the driveway or the main access off of Shellmount and Christie is straight off the intersection, and there was some concern about making that feel safe for not just vehicles but pedestrians. So we're going to make every attempt possible to use upgraded materials like concrete unit pavers to create a slower street there, and then make sure that we have really good crosswalks that are identified and very pedestrian-friendly. And then up against the building, you see these large circles, these concentric circles. That's a terrace that runs from the, an amenity terrace that runs from the south at the R&amp;D building all the way up to the north, past the residential lobby to what we're calling the bicycle meeting area, which is our term for a disguised fire lane. And all of these moves are to make it feel more friendly for pedestrians so that pedestrians and cars can better commingle with each other. One thing I wanted to point out is that all of the drop-offs are happening inside the garage for the R&amp;D on the south and the residential to the north. And so we're going to be treating that area inside the garage in a much more special way than typically you see in a garage. We'll run those paving patterns right into the garage and make that feel more like a well-lit kind of arrivals area. Moving up to the fire lane area, what we've done is we've pulled the fire lane back from the corner so we can get more trees in the corner and make it feel like it's a 20-foot path that's meant for everything you can do in a park that's on a hardscape. And we've tried to camouflage it with a series of patterns of smaller circles, and we also hope to make that out of some upgraded material like concrete units, and maybe the circles are made out of cast-in-place concrete. I'll show you some renderings of how that works. Also, you'll see there are a series of stone seat walls that run along the perimeter of that. So it really changes the character from a fire lane into something that can also be well-used by people on bikes and other kinds of wheels. And again, reemphasizing the fact that while the bicycle path, the dedicated bicycle path on the west side may not connect anything to the north for a very long time, we actually feel that it's very important that we have the ability to go both ways from the north of the site so that you can connect to Christie and connect down to Powell to the south. Right now, you know, rather than, we don't feel that we have to wait until the other properties build the path. We sort of need it right now to make this very successful. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to show you a few renderings because this was not in the package. We've developed these renderings since. This is the image, and I'm going to walk you through sort of a walkthrough of the park. This is the view that you'll see when you come up Christie Avenue and you first enter the project. And when I mentioned it was a deep park space, you're looking all the way back to the residential tower in the back, and you're seeing that line of amenity terrace along that one side on the left, and then you're seeing the sort of open green space in the middle, and then you're seeing a forest, a kind of environment. So you get two different kinds of environments. And the area on the left is the smaller space in front of the R&amp;D building. Next slide. So this is what that could look like. A small terrace right off of Christie, dedicated mostly to the R&amp;D building folks, and there's talk about, there's plans in the way, being thought about for putting a cafe in there that spills out onto this space. Next slide, please. So moving closer into the park, you can see the driveway, which we're talking about using unit pavers to try to do some traffic calming there. You can see right up against the building where you enter into the building, where the drop-offs are in the inside, begins this terrace of concentric amenity space. And the fire lane to the right, which is a sort of opening in the forest, but has some bollards to keep the general public from moving in because it's only there for fires, for when there's a fire. And moving in against the building where all the amenities spill out from the building, we're talking about a cafe at the southern end, about where the person is on the left. And then in the middle is the lobby to the residential, and at the north is where all the bicycle amenities that are inside the building spill out onto that bicycle meeting area. You're also seeing a playground from a similar, the same company that built the vertical playground in Emeryville. We'd like to, we'd suggest building something like that because, for a playground, because it doesn't take up a lot of real estate. And we're putting it in a position where the kids can go in that structure from the terrace on one side through the open space and into the forest on the other end. And I think that would be a really interesting and attractive place for, new place for kids to go. Next. And that's what that kind of looks like, how it spans from the terrace on the left into the woods on the right. You can see some of the stone walls on some of the east-west pathways that cut through the gardens. Next slide, please. So this is standing at the residential building behind me, looking back out towards the park, towards the conifer grove, which we would like to plant with heavy understory so that it's quite intimate and has some great planting character. Next slide, please. And then at the other end, looking back towards the residential building. That gives you a flavor of that area of the park. Next slide, please. Now we're on the bicycle meeting area, which is the fire lane that's been disguised, and we're going to use all H1-loaded materials, concrete unit pavers that can withstand fire trucks, it's a very common thing, we do that all the time. And so we can make, we can make this fire lane not look like a fire lane, not look like your typical fire lane. And next slide, please. Here's looking back the other way. I think it could be a very lovely place for people on three wheels, families, children with all kinds of skateboards and motorized devices of the future. Next. And then looking back up north along the terrace, back towards the R&amp;D building. And this is at the residential building just to the right. Next. Now, just briefly, I want to talk about the roof design. It's, since we're designing a garden on the roof primarily for laboratory uses, we thought about the motif of cell structures to create something that's very beautiful looking down, inspirational perhaps for the scientists that might be working in there, the researchers. But there are all kinds of patterns, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see what we're suggesting. This is a relatively simple garden because they're basically made out of these cell-like structures that are planters. And the green amoeba shapes are planted with heavy understory and trees. The yellow amoeba elements are bioswales that take care of the water off of the two roofs of the residential and the R&amp;D building. And then the kind of brown, three brown structures are outdoor workspaces. And we have a special treatment around the residential building, which I'll get to at the end. So please, the next slide. So this is a section going north-south, residential at the left with private residential gardens, deck terraces that are built into the, built into the system of planters. The R&amp;D building on the right, and essentially a garden that's made out of two-foot-tall Corten steel shapes that are filled with plants and with a kind of labyrinth of spaces that you move through.
Can not hear? We seem to have lost Mr. Walker's video and audio. Not sure. David, do you need to reconnect or something?
What did you say, Charlie? Sorry, I missed that.
We seem to have, Mr. Walker, who was making the presentation, seems to have cut out for some reason.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Is that David Walker?
David, are you back? David, can you hear you now? Oh, sorry, something bugged out on my computer. I apologize. Yeah, if you go to the next slide, I'm almost at the end. So here you can see another view that shows some of the outdoor workspaces. We're planning on making something really interesting up there. Next slide. Finally, the private residential gardens that serve that floor of the residential building, built into that motif with a series of terraces that are surrounded by planting like the image on the right. Next slide. Built out of Corten walls with heavy planting and then multi-stem trees coming out to make a kind of naturalistic space. Next. And so I leave you with this image, which is really the image that we want to offer with this project as the entrance to, the new entrance image to Emeryville with the deep park space, green space, being the sort of new iconic naturalistic solution. And with that, thank you very much, and we'd be happy to take questions.
Thanks so much, David. Any planning commissioners want to start off with some questions?
I have a question just on that, continuing the discussion on the bike path. So I do really appreciate the additional visuals and showing really how that path around the building, it can really work as beautiful park space. Well, one thing that's not clear, though, I do really like the idea of avoiding that stretch of Christie and that stretch of Powell. I'm often on my bike and I stick to the sidewalks there because it's treacherous. But what, how, once you wrap around, how do you get past the Denny's there? What's, you guys, it's illustrated as future, but then you say it's doable now if this comes online.
Maybe you can go back to the plan. You're going to have to use the existing easement to get back to Powell. Once we get to the plan, you can see that. So that gray area, that gray area at the bottom doesn't exist. You'll have to wrap around in the parking lot of the Denny's.
I see. So you can't go straight into the, well, I guess they have some, there's like a little path there that's kind of like bushes off to the left. But yeah, if you wanted to actually ride through there. Okay, so that's what it would look like.
You're basically riding through the parking lot of Denny's to get to the southern part of the path. And this was what we discussed with the B-PAC for also, about making those connections from Powell up to our property in the future. Maybe this is something the planning commission wants to help persuade Denny's to participate in.
Yeah, it seems like such a short distance, it would be nice.
Exactly.
We would absolutely love to figure out a way to do that. So.
We've done everything we can to get bicycles to move through our site in a safe way, but they're not, they're not great connection on either end, right? Even at Christie, it's difficult. There's no space for bikes out there currently, but that's beyond, that's sort of beyond our site.
Thanks, Commissioner. Do any other commissioners have questions for the presenters?
I see Commissioner Graham's hand is up.
Thanks. Sorry, I can only see, we're still seeing the presentation, so we're not seeing it much. So Commissioner Graham, let's go for it.
That's awesome. Thank you for listening to us and changing, redesigning the project. Did a good job this time and last time, although I missed the models that you mailed last time, Peter. So my question is, is it possible to have another view like a retail on the first floor, or that's not possible?
Well, we proposed that for the garage at the lowest level. So in, you know, we're sort of in the midst of commingling both the architecture and the landscape together, and in David's renderings of the park, you could see this sort of long white strip that would essentially have a cafe or retail space, and then the, you know, front door for the residential, which would be the lobby for that residential space along that whole frontage. So those spaces will look, yeah, you can see in the plan here, those spaces will look right out into the park. And so the idea is to use those spaces to really activate this promenade, and, you know, it connects the, you know, the site from north to south with pedestrians and bicycles or whoever's moving along that edge. So yeah, I think that's a valid suggestion. We've also talked about small cafe area, maybe in the R&amp;D, but it's
We've also talked about, um, small cafe area, maybe in the, um, R and D, but it's still, you know, early in how we really program those two spaces.
Yeah, because I saw in the rendering on the R and D side that there are people are having coffee, but there's no coffee shops. So, so, yeah, that's kind of.
True.
And one thing, Commissioner Dram, the, the VPAC and also some of the folks from the community meeting raised was kind of exactly your, your point, right? Which is how, how to activate the green space and, and, and kind of have some, have some ground level, um, ground level interest. And, and it's not, it's not, it's not a great site for kind of traditional retail, just from an access perspective and a visibility perspective. So what we're trying to do here is, is, um, retail-like spaces, right? Whether it's a, whether it's a cafe or we've, we've, we've talked about even some sort of amenity, or maybe it's a bike shop or something like that, that, that we, we would most likely kind of financially subsidize, but it would be something that would be, um, kind of for the, for the, for the activation purposes for the community. It would, you know, it would be, um, something to kind of activate, um, activate the ground level.
Right, like something like a coffee shop. I think the R and D professionals and residents would, would use it a lot. So that's gonna be a very good use for them and community, other people can have meeting there. Uh, so that's perfect, thank you for that. And, um, for the rooftop we have, I have a picture to share, can I? I just want to ask him, is possible to do this or not? Okay. Okay, um, is it possible we divide, uh, this rooftop and give portion of it to these residents and the other portion to R and D? Is that feasible?
I think, um, I think right now, I mean, there's, there's nothing extremely special about the place we've put the kind of demising line between the residential and the R and D building space on the top of the, on the top of the garage. Um, in this, in this, in this view that you're showing. Um, but, but the other thing that we, that we were considering is that the residential building actually has the, the roof of the residential building as well, um, for public open space. Um, and so with the, with kind of the square footage of the residential building and the square footage of the R and D building, the fact that the residential building already has the, um, the roof and private balconies, we thought that it would be, um, you know, that, that, that the bulk of the garage roof should go to the R and D building. But, um, we could certainly explore, you know, kind of exactly where that specific line goes. Um, but it was, it was just kind of more of, of balancing out the, um, the open space between the two different uses, considering the residential has, has their own roof deck.
Awesome, so we have a like, uh, shared space, green rooftop under residential portion, right?
Agreed, uh, yes, correct, sorry, not agreed, correct, yeah. So, so, so on, so on, so on the top of the residential building, there's, there's some space that's allocated for building systems, MEP, you know, things of that nature. Um, and then the other portion is, uh, a, a roof deck for the, for the residents.
Okay, I think, um, I have not seen the documents, but that's exciting because we have better views on top of there, uh, for the residents.
Yeah, this will be great.
Yes, and other than that, I'm good, just, what is bike meet place? Uh, I didn't get that, the top portion, you go ahead, bike meet?
Um. That's a, sorry, I, I can address that.
Yeah.
That's a term that we need to find some better words for it, I think. You know, we're, we're, we were struggling to find all the things that, that you could do in a park that's in a paved area. And bicycles are, are the obvious thing, right? Because we're providing, uh, a ma, a very major, uh, component of bikes in the building on the top corner of that building. So, um, um, we're looking for more things that you can do on a hardscape inside a park like that.
Okay, I see, I see.
Bike meeting place is a sort of a loose term we're using right now to, of what to call them.
Okay, awesome. Um, I don't think I have any other question, thank you so much, and good job.
Commissioner Mora, I see your hand is up?
Oh, yeah, uh, so you guys, uh, alluded to the, the reason why the residential building was shrunk. And I was wondering if you could elaborate on that? Because it seems like an easy way to add units and density, uh, is to restore the height. And, uh, I'd like to know more about what, what went into that decision.
I can do a little bit of an explanation, and Lauren, you can jump in on this one. But, um, the exercise that we've gone through over the last six months really wasn't just a matter of, um, you know, picking up and moving pieces, but instead it meant that we had to take the R and D building and actually adjust the footprint of the building and the floor plate size, the width and length, which changed the proportion of that building entirely. And then we had to do the same thing with the garage, where we reduced the height and changed the efficiency and really compacted the garage as much as we could. And then the other part was the residential building, um, which sat originally on, on gray as a sort of standalone building, we had to lift that up, that volume, and put it on top of the garage. And then we had, first of all, structural constraints, because we had to allow all of the, uh, you know, columns to drop through the garage efficiently. And then we had to organize the building so that it was a little bit longer and two floors lower, and also, um, the same width. So moving, you know, kind of massaging and making the forms of both the R and D building and the residential building more plastic really took a lot of effort to kind of adjust things. So, um, what we found was that as we also responded to other comments from the planning commission and the public, we reduced the scale of the project, as Lauren described when she first introduced the project. We reduced everything, um, sort of, uh, in the same ratio. So the relationship between the area of the R and D building and the relationship of area for the residential building, they, they shrunk sort of, you know, all the, they shrunk proportionally. So there wasn't really a change in ratio, it was just a reduction in the overall size of the project. Hopefully that, that answers your question, but, you know, I'm happy to talk more.
I see, yeah, no, and just to follow up on that, so it's, it sounds like it's a, it's a technical constraint why the residential tower couldn't simply be taller to have more units. Is that, is that right?
I'd say it's, well, it's two things. So we tried to balance the area and maintain that same percentage. So we have 22% of the floor area dedicated to residential and 78% dedicated to, um, the research and development. So we tried to balance that. The other part, and the other concern that came out of the meeting in January was, and this is another point that Lauren mentioned, we tried to reduce the amount of shadow that was cast to the north. And by shifting the R and D building to the south of the site, we cast shadows on our own project. And then we reduced the size of the resi by squishing it and stretching it. And that allowed us to cast less shadows to the north also. So there, there were a few things that kind of went into that. So it, you know, it's, there's all these kind of sliders that we have to move around to make it kind of fit. But those were the, the major sort of impacts. And Lauren, you want to add anything?
So shadow reduction was a, a factor there?
It, it certainly was, and I think Maru touched on this too, the placement of that open space. You know, that's one of the drivers for how we started the project, was we wanted to have an open space F-grade and the building sort of wrapped around it. And then as we developed this new sort of current design, um, we also studied, not just the shadows, but we also studied the thermal comfort of the roof garden and, and the thermal comfort of the park itself and the amount of useful daylight that you get, you know, sunlight on those two spaces. And I think, I'm pretty sure in our package, we included that information, so you could get an idea of how many useful hours there are in that, on the roof garden and how many useful hours are in the, in the street-level park. So all those things, you know, um, the shadow, the useful sort of daylight hours, the thermal comfort, all fit into that equation.
Thank you.
Not to overcomplicate things.
I'll just, I'll just.
Can I go for a line?
No, I was, I was just going to just kind of be the, be the, the big bad developer on the, on the line and also bring up kind of the, the, the financial impact. So the, um, prior to my role, uh, at Oxford, I primarily worked on residential buildings, so, um, rental and for-sale buildings. And the reason that we're not seeing a lot of these buildings being built right now is because it's so expensive for, for folks to build them. Um, and, and I, the, the, the residential uses here, I think will be amazing. The homes will have really, really great views. It's, it's gonna be a really unique type of project, but it's very expensive to build the way that we're talking about building it on top of a parking garage. Um, so we're, 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 essentially the, the research and development building is subsidizing all, every single residential unit, even the market rate units. Um, so the, so the rent levels just don't compensate for the cost of building it. Um, so that's the other less technical, more big bad developer answer, um, for why they're, when, when Peter's saying we're kind of balancing out the uses, there's, there's some of that that goes into it as well.
That's extremely clarifying, right? Because it, it seems like the most economic thing to do is you can add units on top of existing, uh, you know, surface area. Uh, but learning that the, the, the design and on being on top of the parking structure, uh, creates a loss on those residential units, that, that's a helpful perspective, so thank you.
Sure. Wax?
Commissioner Wax, if you have any questions? Okay, maybe not. Um, any other commissioners who have questions?
Uh, there we go. Oh, there you go, okay, thank you. I was having technical difficulties, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so I just have one question, um, because I heard this upfront and then I heard a lot of details later. You're saying that it's not, uh, it's not a matter of if you were to add lab space back in, we could get more housing in proportion with that?
Um, so, yes, um, so, and, and Peter, I might ask for you to help me with some of these specifics about the lab building, but the, the lab building right now is, um, 10 stories?
Good, it's 12.
12, okay, so, so there's a, there's, there ends up being kind of a, kind of a, um, critical point with the height of lab, lab buildings where, um, they don't, they kind of, the functionality starts to diminish with how, how tall they get. So it's not as simple as just kind of adding a floor and it's the same, uh, value, it has the same functionality. So that's, that's, that's part of the challenge with just kind of adding another floor in the lab and then adding another floor in the residential to kind of keep that balance. Um, Peter, I'm sure that I dramatically oversimplified it, but.
That's right, that's a good description. And, and it's really because of the, the, uh, and it's a code issue, really. The, the lab itself is driven and the functional characteristics of the lab are driven really by the amount of, um, chemicals that can be stored. And as you go up in the building, they reduce, so you kind of get this kind of pyramid. And then when you're near the top, when you get above, you know, 12, 13, 14 floors, it just doesn't really work from a, a lab standpoint. So you, you kind of have to, um, you know, I think Lauren's exactly right.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, after all of the design considerations that you've gone through and the limitations of this kind of space, what you're presenting is basically the highest intensity use at this build quality that we could get out of this project?
Yes, that's correct. It's, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of FAR for the site, um, and for some of the constraints and for the access. Um, you know, just kind of taking, taking the various access points and open space and, and kind of all of the things that we're trying to fit on the site, um, is, is, is challenging. And, you know, I mean, I think, I think some of the, some of the questions about, about the fire lane and, um, you know, just, just, just kind of hinted at that. So we've, we've, we've really, and I don't know how many models Peter's team, you know, kind of looked at, but, you know, we looked at shrinking the residential more or, or putting it, you know, putting it in a different location or rotating things or, you know, and so there's, there's just kind of a lot of needs and demands on the site, um, because of the size and kind of, um, geometry of it.
And I would also add, one other question, one other point I would make is that when we met in January with the planning commission, I think there was, um, you know, a general consensus that reducing the scale of the project would actually be better. And so it's, it's probably a nine or 10% reduction to both, um, to actually all the sort of, you know, components, really, the two buildings themselves and then, you know, a nearly 20% reduction for the parking garage. So a lot of reduction really in response to city comments.
Uh, just one comment on that, um, and you may have noticed, there are three new commissioners, uh, so please take note.
Yep, duly noted.
Commissioner Dram, do you, do you have another question?
As I, some other question comes up while I was, uh, listening to questions. Um, I just want to see if we can include the indoor public space as an open space on this project. The same thing that we've seen on 222 Second Street in San Francisco, the Lincoln Building. Have you explored that idea, Peter?
Yeah, actually, I think, um, when we presented, um, in January, the, the lobby for, um, the original design, um, was all conceived in that same vein, where you had, um, indoor open space. And I think there was some concern from city staff standpoint about having indoor public, like a popos? I think that's what you're talking about.
Right.
Correct, yeah. So I, I think we had proposed that, and I think there was a little bit of concern about actually making that work within the framework of, um, the city, uh, you know, planning code. Uh, we like, we love that idea, it's a really beautiful space too, it's really awesome.
I think this is nicer than the bike path. Having that for community, I think is more useful than consider the bike path or bike meet as the, uh, uh, public use. Okay, perfect, so we might be able to get that back, right? We might have that back, right? Is it possible?
I mean, it's, it's, it's certainly physically possible. We're still, you know, we're still certainly designing the lobby for the, for the lab building. I think it's, it's a bit of, you know, it's a bit of, we're, we're hearing something different from what we heard in, heard in January, which I, you know, I also wasn't here in January, so also I'm, I'm, I'm a newbie to the, to the, to the Zoom table as well. Um, so cer- certainly physically, you know, that's, that's an option. I think a lot of it depends on, you know, where the commission is kind of bending today.
Okay, okay, awesome, awesome, thank you. And one more question, uh, this, uh, we have some lines on the elevation on the, uh, R and D building. And Art is connected to the building or they, they have a distance? I'm just thinking about the.
The horizontal shade element.
Yes.
Yeah, so what we're representing in the curtain wall right now is, you know, sort of a unitized curtain wall system with shadow box, which are opaque and insulated, and then also fully transparent. And then where it's transparent, we're providing, uh, shade. And in order for us to really, um, meet Title 24 and to produce, you know, a highly efficient building, we, we need to protect the vision lights, the, the glazing that's open. And, and that helps to reduce, um, the solar heat gain and helps to create, you know, more energy efficiency. It also does some other interesting things with, which help with daylight autonomy, so that the building can be, you know, we'd love to see this building naturally daylight, which is, um, spatially really, really nice. It's also, from an energy standpoint, really, really a great thing too. So that's kind of where this sketch rendering is showing right now.
Okay, love it, thank you, Peter. That's very nice, it's very nice. And the last question for the, uh, residential building. Do we have, I mean, as I say on the plan, we have, I mean, it is, uh, but, um, can you explain more about that portion?
The, the rooftop?
Not the rooftop, I think it's on the first floor.
Well, right now, the, um, for the residential building, I think there is a plan somewhere. I think our open space plan shows actually, there is a, um, a roof deck. So when you look at the floor plan, um, of, let's see if we should see it in here, uh, right here, this is it. Right, so, um, on the right-hand side, the figure 1.23, um, there's kind of a yellow space, which is essentially the roof deck, which would be, um, sort of west-facing. And it would also have, you know, a photovoltaic canopy on top of it. But the idea is to basically create space that really harnesses the views for the residents. So residents are in the, their apartments and then they can go up to this, um, communal space and really have a really great outdoor space. Um, on the right-hand side of that, um, that sort of third module, the right-hand block includes, um, sort of a, like a catering kitchen or a community room, um, obviously connection to egress, but also mechanical space. So the idea was to kind of shift that to the, um, east so that we could really leverage those westerly views. And then, so that's essentially what happens on the rooftop. At the podium level, you can see the yellow area. At the podium level, you can see the yellow areas are all the, a collection of small sort of private terrace areas that David spoke of in his description. And then there's also one sort of common space, which is in that lower right-hand corner, which says residential common space. So there's a, a community room there and then an outdoor space. So that gives you an idea of kind of the, the primary amenity spaces for the residents.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. I would like to know if we can add more in future. I'm going to ask you, Peter, if we can have more amenities for the residential building. So make it more pleasant for people who live there and, and start living there. Awesome. You did a really good job with redesigning. So I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Tran. Do we have any other questions from any commissioners?
I just had one question about illumination on the bike path. Will that be, you know, as it gets darker, will that be like a safe place? Are there, what sort of thought have you guys put into that?
Well, maybe David could speak to this, but I would say lighting is one of our next steps, really.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna fulfill a certain foot candle requirement out in the park in particular. I'm not sure about what's required for the Class One Bike Lane along the freeway. You know, that's a different story. That's, maybe that's more general lighting out there. But in the park, we hope to do a beautiful job. So it's integrated with the park.
Yeah, it's, it's a, I mean, we, we're, we're long-term, long-term investors in the, in the city of Emeryville. We have another, you know, project coming before you in almost exactly a month. And, and so sa- safety and lighting and community security and all those things are absolutely top of mind.
Wonderful. Thank you. Very nice building.
Okay, excellent. Well, thanks so much. So if there are no other commissioner comments, I have four commissioner questions. I have one brief question. So for the park, can you just remind me, are you private developer maintaining it? Or does it get turned over to the city? I should know this. Sorry.
We would, we would, we would retain ownership and maintenance of them.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Okay, great. So now do we move on to commissioner comments?
I believe first we should have public comments.
Absolutely. Okay.
Now is the time for public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine on your phone. This time I'll check to see whether any comments have been received. Be the online comment card and whether anyone has raised their hands to read audio comments. I've checked my email and checking it again, I don't have any new public comment cards. But as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I did receive one earlier. And there are also two raised hands among the attendees. I will note that my comment card is from Lisa Findley. I also see Lisa Findley in the attendee list. If Ms. Findley wishes to make her comments verbally, she can raise her hand. Otherwise, I will read her comment card. But I would suggest that we first hear the comments from the others. People who have their hands raised first, who has been waiting patiently since the beginning of the meeting is Jerry Santarpia. So go ahead, please, Mr. Santarpia.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, you can hear? Oh, thank you. Good evening, members of Emeryville Planning Commission. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jerry Santarpia and I'm a, I am a field representative at North Cal Carpenters Union Local 713. I represent approximately 36,000 carpenters in Northern California, many of whom live and work here in the city of Emeryville. The carpenter union is, we are concerned, the carpenters, about the lack of communication with the labor on this proposed development before you tonight. The city of Emeryville has a long history of supporting good development and at the same time, supporting opportunities for labor. A commitment to a union general contractor brings opportunities for good-paying jobs, healthcare, apprenticeship standards, and for carpenters to work in the city they live in. This is a large development and there should be a commitment to use a gen- union general contractor in recognition of the, of the quality standards that only a union GC can deliver. The carpenter union does not currently support or oppose this development. We ask Oxford Properties Group for better communication with labor and we ask that the commission is take our concerns seriously as this project continues to move through the process. Thank you for your time.
All right. And the next speaker is Rod Henley. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening. And Rod Henley, recused planning commissioner and Christie Avenue resident. And first I, I would say that this is, I think, an excellent response to community input that you received before for the new commissioners. That included comments about moving residential away from the south and away from the gas station, which is unhealthy. And, and also the idea of reducing the mass to the north in order to reduce the shadow to the north, all which was achieved. And so I think this, we very much appreciate as residents that made those comments that you've been highly responsive. I think the overall theme is really strong. The South Park is really well-located. It's going to work well, even with new developments that are more intensive to the east. For example, having a park there will provide a nice buffer and space. And, and the program, I think, is also a good program. It's a good mix of uses. That was one of the questions. I think there's an appropriate amount and balance of housing in office buildings. The 20% reduction in parking is fantastic. I think that was very smart to do and it brought the building down. And your, your parking study that shows exceeding the maximum amount is convincing. I think it was well-done and, and I, I think it's, it shows that that's justified. Your elevation treatment of the outside and both the housing in the office is, I think, very elegant and handsome and, and is also a big improvement over what you showed before. And I think the view from Shell Mount, looking toward the office building, shows how those angles of the building work much better when it's located to the south than when it was on the north, because now those shapes really seem to make more sense. In terms of the open space, though, and the community bonus, I support the 5,000 square foot bike lane on the west because this is a separate bike lane, separate from the drive and can be clearly shown to be a, a community benefit. However, I think the 7,000 square foot bike meet area is not justifiable as a bonus because this is a drive. And yes, bikes can of course go there, but it's a, it's a, it's a north side of the building. It's cold. It is not a bike lane that is in addition to a drive. It is the drive. And therefore I think there's a big difference. And I think that 7,000 square foot should not be included. And I also do not support the idea of interior spaces aside because I, being used for public benefit, because it's very difficult to make that into a truly public space. Downtown San Francisco, where it's highly congested, is very different. This is a very different situation. And finally, I think I would suggest you explore the movement of bikes to Powell. For example, people are going to use the south drive.
Three minutes is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Lisa Findley has not raised her hand. So I will go ahead and read the online speaker card that she submitted. My comments. This is Lisa Findley from 6019 Christie Avenue. And she says, "Project has significantly improved and team responded well to community input. I also applaud the team's careful look at sun and wind on the site. However, I offer a few comments, some informed by familiarity with the conditions of the area since I live on Christie, just 250 feet from the site." One, while the open space proposed is greatly improved, there are some problems. The newly branded bike meet area all along the northern side of the parking structure, residential tower looks more like an alley and will be in shadow all day, almost every day. It will likely be unfriendly and seldom used, except maybe as a surrogate dog park. While it is necessary for fire access, it appears to be an attempt to increase open space. As a bike meet area, it seems excessive. Likewise, the thin strip of landscaping south of the lab building across the drive from the gas station is not at all useful as open space and should not be included in an open space calculation. The study of the climate and comfort on the residential roof terrace, while the parking garage underestimates the severity of the afternoon winds from the west at this site. In addition, while it is separated from the freeway vertically, freeway noises have to be a nuisance in this space. A design element to baffle the wind noise while maintaining the view is advisable if the space is to really be usable. Likewise, given the windy conditions, built-in benches, furniture would be more practical and not apt to blow away. While the landscaping looks lovely in the main open space, the fact that there is extremely limited sunlight for some months due to building shadowing suggests that the lush images we see may never occur, even after 30 years of growth. It would be great and more realistic to see some images of what the park, quote unquote, will look like in five years instead. Two, the staff asks for suggestions of other ways to, other ways the project could contribute to the public good to reach their bonus point goals. A couple of thoughts, provision of open space indoor and outdoor for daycare on-site and/or robust contributions to the Emery Go-Round to support increased service in lieu of suggested park shuttle. Three, the design of the residential building seems unambitious, particularly compared to the lab building. This could be improved. As part of this, I urge the developers to increase the size of the family spaces in the three-bedroom units. These are paltry and it is counterintuitive that they should be so much smaller than those in one and two-bedroom units. This is regardless of affordability status of the units. Thank you for the chance to comment further on this promising project. And that concludes her comment. Let me just double-check to see if I received any further online speaker cards. I have not. And I see no further raised hands among the attendees. So at this point, I think Vice Chair Simons, you can close the public comment period.
Thanks, Charlie. So let's close the public comment period and open up commissioner comments. I'll just go down the list if I see. Okay, Commissioner Mora. That's great. Or sorry, I guess maybe a little explanation for our new commissioners. So this is an opportunity to give your comments directly to developers and city staff rather than as questions, sort of any strong thoughts and feelings you have about what you'd like to see out of this project.
Yeah, definitely. Overall, I think it's a beautiful mixed-use building. I, I personally look forward to riding on that bike path. And, you know, fingers crossed it'll connect, connect on the south end at some point soon. I do want to echo what Commissioner Wax asked, which is that, that question, which is really, is this the, is this the best we can do in terms of residential units? You know, I, I know the development was shrunk for, you know, based on comments provided earlier. And, you know, I, I hate to ping pong you guys on this, but, you know, please consider going bigger. You know, I think there's, there's a lot of potential in this location. And I would, you know, love to see that. And just seeing what you guys have done with the previous feedback, I feel like if you put your, your heads to it, you can wow us again. So thank you for putting this together and taking the time to come here tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioner Mora. I realized we don't have the questions from staff up on screen, which I think is incredibly helpful for giving advice. So why don't we throw that up on screen and then Commissioner Mora, if you want to go again at the end, we can do that. Let's see, what I see, Commissioner Tran next on my list. So go for it.
Hey, awesome. Thank you for this team. They listened to us very well. They really did the project. We go over these questions. I think the number of the units and the R and D is perfectly fit on the side. I know we have less residential compared than before, but comparing to other projects that we have here, I think this is a really good opportunity to have these residential units. For parking, I mean, I think that the number of parkings are good unless the other commissioners have any input on it. For open space, I do not agree on the bike, bike path and the bike meet as an open space. I hope that we can find somewhere else and feed it on the project. Other than that, thanks, Peter. Thanks, everybody. Lauren, you did very well. David, thank you. Oh, we have two more questions. The height is fine and design, other, the design other issues are fine, too. Thank you so much. You did a good job.
Vice Chair Simons?
Yes.
I may, I would just like to make a correction. I see Mira has just took down the questions. But the first question reflects, I believe, the former design in terms of the size of the building. Or perhaps that was a whole, there you go. That's. That's the correct question. Okay. Number one, the one that she showed had the wrong numbers in there.
Thanks, Charlie. Okay, the next commissioner I see on the list is Commissioner Wax. Take it away.
Okay, so first I want to thank the developers for their presentation. It's obvious that you've done a lot of work bringing this from where it was to where it is now. It is gorgeous. And I, I think you gave us a really informative view on, on your process here. I'm going to go ahead and, and come back to, to the intensity of use question again. Emeryville needs more housing and I favor routes to get that, that include, you know, building a higher intensity use, including lab space on this, if that's what it takes. I would like to point out that this is, especially with, you know, what we have in the pipeline, not, I think, going to be like a super open space starved part of the city. There are other ways to get points. And if we can have a significant increase in the amount of housing that this project delivers, I'm willing to have that conversation. Absolutely. Another thing, yeah, the sun-wind study that was commented on earlier, obviously from my earlier questions to staff, I find that like semi-theoretical considering the development environment surrounding this. I don't know if there's anything that anybody can do about that, like, you know, put some dummy massing up and see what that does to, to the comfort levels in your open space. But it is definitely something to think about. You can't tell the future, but, you know. Yeah, so the number one thing that I'm probably going to bring up anytime we have a development like this has to do with the parking structure. This is probably going to be the third or fourth time that you've heard this. There hasn't been any movement on this and I kind of understand why, because you have constraints. And my research into adaptable parking, you know, has, has shown me that like, no matter how much you can, you can get value-wise out of just more design hours, ultimately, if you're going to repurpose some of this space for residential or office use, it's going to increase your construction costs on the parking structure. That said, where we are is, is, is always going to end up like meeting halfway. We're going to be building, if we get a project built, we're going to be building less than what the developer was asking for, more than what the city really wants, but enough to get it built. But then the future demand, I think everybody agrees, is just going to keep going down over the decades. And this is a structure that I think we should anticipate being here for at least most of the rest of the century, during which we're going to see a ton of changes. Obviously, here in Emeryville, we're going through an intense, you know, amount of change, but also just in the means of transportation around the country. And so even if you cannot deliver a parking structure that is fully adaptable, which would be understandable considering the cost increases and the fact that we don't currently, to my understanding, have much of a mechanism to like help that happen. We don't like have help from the state right now to help that happen. It's, it's very much like a burgeoning. it's very much like a burgeoning field that cities are increasingly realizing they're building parking structures that don't have a future. I would still like to see some kind of creative work on this that says, well, for example, maybe we can only afford to take like the first deck or two and build that so that it is later adaptable into office or residential when we see that the, uh, that the demand has indeed dropped enough that it's a waste of money not to do it. But the rest of the structure, you know, you have right now basically two uses for the parking spaces, and I think, uh, I, uh, I, I would guess if you're designing it that way, that it's, it's somewhat regimented, whereas you designed from the beginning to say, well, we're going to have a big reduction in, you know, our lab parking demand. In twenty years, we're anticipating that, you know, we're going to need bays for, you know, autonomous vehicles or something like that. If you build the parking structure to begin with to where it can serve whatever, you know, uses even just as parking spaces without having to do, uh, a bunch of refurbishing, um, I think that'll be easier to make happen, because the last thing we want to do is build a parking structure with a ton of concrete um, that is going to end up sitting half-empty for decades. Um, and, you know, while it may be expensive to build the entire thing to be convertible, I think some planning that goes into this at this stage might make it much more reasonable to turn it into something that can be used for like anything other than residential and lab, and that's what the parking here does. So I would love to see, I would love to see some progress on that. Um, but just coming back around, my final comment, uh, on, on this building is, um, I'm already on record as saying that I found the previous development in this site somewhat problematic, but that intensity of use is what I favor. That was a fifty-three-story building, but it was going to deliver a lot, uh, to Emeryville. There are a lot of people that don't agree with me, but that's where I stand. So if you can come back with something that delivers more housing and also comes more lab, I would be favorable to looking at that. Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Wax. Um, Commissioner Mora, do you have any more brief comments you want to offer? Otherwise, I'll go. Keep things moving.
I see Commissioner.
Nothing additional.
I see Commissioner Dram's hand. Vice Chair Simons?
Okay, go for it, Commissioner Dram.
So a question came up when Commissioner Wax was talking. Uh, Charlie, this question for you, can be compromised like, uh, the open space with more units or that's not possible? They, they have to meet the open space?
Well, there are a lot of different open space requirements. Uh, there for residential, it's private open space and common open space. And they have to meet, um, it's a combination of those. If you can't meet the private open space requirements, which is balconies and patios for each individual unit, then you can meet that by providing more common open space. But they, they have to meet the requirement either through private open space or common open space. And then for the commercial, there's additional requirements for, uh, their common open space and vocals.
Okay, so second question that comes out, can we make it conditional that, uh, I know we are not, it's not just a study, for accepting this bike meet and bike path give us like seven more units or something like that, or that's not possible?
Well, that's, that, that would be going beyond the question of development bonus points then. That would be more like of a negotiation between the developer and the commission to try to get more units in exchange for something.
Accepting, right?
Yeah, not, I don't.
Can we do that?
Well.
I think this is a time for Commissioner Comments, not for questions to staff.
Yeah, that'll take some thought.
This thing came out.
That'll take some thought to figure out how to do that.
Yeah, okay. So that would be interesting if I get more units and we accept the bike meter, you know? That's, that is like win-win situation.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Dram.
Thank you.
So it's my turn, I will go. Um, first of all, say thank you so much to the developer. I think, like many of us have said, this project is way, way, way better than it was before. Um, I think it's really, really promising. I've been thinking about the, the fact that like offices are discussed in square feet and, you know, residential is discussed in units. So I wanted to reorient ourselves from square feet to number of workers. So I did a little research and biotech, it seems to be three hundred and fifty to four hundred square feet per worker. Um, so that would mean we're at about thirteen hundred workers in this building. Um, and I did some very back-endable math, which I'm sure City Staff had helped me with. Um, and, you know, somewhere around a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty residential units or people living in this building. So we're at about a five to one or six to one ratio. Just so people can clarify whether this is make your job housing balance better or worse. Um, definitely making it worse. Um, but it's also mixed, mixed use. We're in a tough economic environment, and I understand why this is what we ended up with. And I'm pretty comfortable, um, with where the project is at. Sorry, can I go back? Can we go back one question back up so I can see questions one and two? So number two, um, I think, you know, we hear this from every developer in the city, and I think City Council or Planning Commission should never approve a project with more than the maximum number of parking permits permitted. I think that's what Chair Keller, uh, would tell us to do. Um, and unless we draw a line in the sand each and every time, we're going to go through the same ritual every single time. So I would say that we, there is no, nothing that can offer that would say this project is okay. In terms of fifty-six more spaces, um, there are no, no findings that can, that would convince me. And let's jump to this other slide, please. I, you know, I think on this question, I really trust City Staff's judgment here. Um, I'd prefer that we get some, you know, money to improve intersection in surrounding areas. That sounds good to me. So I guess that's for question number four. I think, you know, I'm much more interested in improving public space, like City Staff suggests. I really like the public park idea. It's nice to hear the, um, developer is going to be maintaining it. I think sometimes city parks could look a little bit better than they do, but I imagine that's funding-related and that's okay. Couple of other part, um, things that come to mind here, um, and on our Chair Keller, um, I, you know, I think we have yet to see a living wall, um, that has anything, that looks anything like it does in reality compared to what's presented to us. Um, so I particularly don't particularly like that idea on any side of the building. Um, I haven't seen the City Staff's one yet. And, um, finally, Charlie, if you can share that economic analysis about housing development costs with the new commissioners from a couple of months ago, that would be really, really useful. So if you could email that around, um, that would be great. And that's.
Are you referring to the study that was done for the fifty-eight fifty Sherman Way project?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Okay, certainly.
Thank you so much. Um, and then I think that's, we have just one, four very brief items after this.
Uh, yes, so Vice Chair Simons, we need to bring back a couple of commissioners who are recused on this item. So I'm going to text Commissioner Keitzoni and let him know that he can come back to the meeting now, and I will be, uh, promoting Commissioner Henry back to the panel. And with that, uh, I think we can move on to the next item and, Associate Planner Navar Oaks is going to make the staff presentation on this, the pro-housing designation. So Navar, are you ready to go?
Yes, just about here.
Just a moment.
Good evening, everybody.
Uh, let me say while she's, while they're getting started with their presentation, Vice Chair Simons, I just want to note that it is ten minutes after eleven. The last item took much longer than anticipated. And, uh, under the Planning Commission's rules, you need to adjourn by eleven-thirty, unless a majority of the commission votes to continue beyond that time. So, uh, that's just a heads up, just letting you know, you basically have twenty minutes to complete the meeting unless you vote to go longer than that.
Thanks, Charlie.
And I will try to make my presentation short and sweet as well, uh, yet cover everything adequately. So I will be presenting on the pro-housing designation application this evening. So for a little bit of background, the pro-housing designation was created by the state in response to the housing crisis. So what it does is it identifies local policies that jurisdictions should consider adopting to address housing needs, uh, in their area. So those could be affordability and density, all sorts of things like this. And it also identifies state programs and grants that, um, cities that become or jurisdictions that become designated as pro-housing, uh, can receive preference for additional points for applications. And those, uh, state programs include housing, community development, infrastructure, and transportation. Hold on just a moment, sorry. All right, my child just woke up. So, um, the pro-housing, uh, implements the housing element as well. So one of our, uh, programs for the, uh, draft housing element that's, uh, being sent off to the state tomorrow is, uh, to actually submit for pro-housing designation and to track what, um, applications, uh, this might help us, uh, get more points for, get preference for with the state moving forward. So the pro-housing application process includes four scoring categories, and there is not a particular, um, way you have to get points, but you have to get thirty total points distributed, however it works out for your jurisdiction. And once you achieve those thirty points and it's approved by the state, you're done. You don't have to get anything more than that. Like, everything above that is your superstar. So, uh, staff is on a preliminary assessment, and of the total points possible, which there is about sixty-seven plus you can get, uh, we think that we can get about, uh, fifty-three or more, so that far exceeds the thirty. So even if the state doesn't agree with us on every single thing, we should be in good shape. So it's a little bit hard to hear, see here, but this is what the sheets look like, and these were included in your packet also. So, uh, the first category is favorable zoning and land use, and it has ten different policies for a total of up to sixteen points. And we think we can probably get fifteen of these points. So things that this includes for the city of Emeryville are that we have enough sites in our, uh, housing element that go over a hundred and fifty percent of our Vina allocation. And we don't have any single-family zones, and we permit duplexes. So we can get points for all of these things, that we have our own density bonus program that provides a greater benefit than the state density program, and that we have no parking minimums. So for the second category of the acceleration of housing production timeframes, that has thirteen policies, um, total of nine potential point, nineteen, pardon me, potential points, and staff leads, we might be eligible for up to seventeen of those points. Those points, uh, would be earned through, uh, categories such as developing objective standards, which we're working on now. The coordinating permit review between departments, we already do that, so that's something we can get points for. Having a single-plan application form, which we already do, and publicly posting our status updates on permits, which we have in our monthly progress report, um, which is a really great resource. And then the third category is reduction of construction and development cost. So this one has eight total policies, uh, to look into, and a total of eleven points. And for this one, we think we're eligible for six of those points. So that includes creating an ADU application guide. Right now, we don't have a specific guide really walking people through ADUs, which are a unique process. And also, um, having measures that reduce costs for transportation-related infrastructure programs. We have Emery Go-Round, and that, uh, should qualify towards, uh, that policy. And then the fourth category is providing financial subsidies. So there's eight total policies for that, the twelve potential points. And we think that the city of Emeryville is eligible for seven of those. Um, examples for that would be that we have local housing fund through our Measure C bond, and that one of our programs for our draft housing element is to create grants or low-interest loans for ADUs, so we can get points for that as well. And then additionally, there is enhancement factor. So any additional, uh, policies you have in these eight different areas, you can get points for, and they can stack on top of each other if they're different, unique policies that you haven't gotten previous points for in other categories. And we think we can probably get about eight of those, if not more. So some examples of those would be that you're supposed to have policies represent one element of unified multifaceted strategy to promote multiple planning objectives. We have, we have ten guiding principles of the general plan, and our zoning does that very effectively with our transit hubs overlaying with density and FAR mixed use. So all of that works together. So this middle timeline is, uh, staff met with HCD, the Department of, uh, California that is reviewing these applications in May, and went over the application process and talked about any questions we had about terminology or what they were looking for. That, uh, went well and helped inform, uh, our, our information tonight. And today, we're meeting with you all for the Planning Commission. On August third, the same presentation will go to the Housing Committee, and then in September, the City Council, uh, will have a resolution presented to them. Staff aims to submit the application to the state. So it's not just a checklist that staff has to submit. We have to submit all the background documentation to go with it. So that's what will take a little bit of time to compile, considering the other projects we have going on at the same time. Once the state receives it, they have sixty days to provide comments, and then from there, it's just responding to comments and having, uh, HCD having a chance to review them. Uh, Sacramento, uh, it took six months for their designation to be confirmed. So, um, because that might have sparked an interest of like, who has applied, who has done this so far? The state began accepting applications, uh, back last, just about a year ago in June of twenty-twenty-one, and thirteen jurisdictions have applied between now and then. And only one of them has been approved, Sacramento, but three local jurisdictions, um, have applied in the past few months. So that would be San Mateo County, El Cerrito, and Oakland, and all of those have pending applicant revisions. So that means that they've communicated with the state, the state has given the comments, and that now they're just addressing and working on those comments and having a final review. So not quite sure when they're going to get done, but, um, hopefully it will be the next city to submit. So staff is recommending the City Planning Commission review and provide input of information provided this evening and adopt the motion to recommend City Council approved resolution to authorize this middle of the application to the state. And I am available for any questions, as is Valerie Bernard. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much, Navar. Um, Planning Commission, does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Mora?
Uh, so how do we, um, you know, I consider Emeryville to be quite pro-housing, um, but I guess we're not eligible on certain things. Are we trying to close that gap? Before application, or are we good enough just to proceed?
Thanks for bringing that up. I meant to talk about that more in the presentation. Um, so this is written for, you know, any jurisdiction the state can apply. And the jurisdictions are really different, right? It's not meant or intended to have all jurisdictions apply for every single point. So an example would be, um, something that we're not going to apply for is creating, um, like pre-approved plans for, uh, four-unit and underdevelopments. So it just doesn't make sense for a city like Emeryville to do that for investment, um, staff energy, and the type of lot sizes we have, they vary a lot. If you were a larger city, if you were a city that had really, you know, like, um, like a suburb that has all the same lot size and all the same houses, and you can very easily modify it, and everybody could use that, that would make sense for us to apply for that. So there's certain things like that throughout there that just aren't really applicable to us, or would take a disproportionate amount of staff time to get the points available. And once again, and once you reach thirty points, you're in, you're done. Anything past that is like just extra gravy, you know?
If I could also add, there also isn't the requirement that everything be in place today. Once we submit the application and they provide the designation, if there are any policies that we're working on, and some of those are in our housing element, we actually have two years to implement those proposed policies. So it doesn't have to be that everything has to be in place prior to submission. We just have to identify the things that we either have currently on our books or that we intend to, uh, move forward in adopting over the next two years.
Yeah, and a good example of that would be objective standards. Right now, we're actively working on that. It will, I know depending on the timeline of the submittal of, uh, uh, application approval timeline with the state, objective standards might, may or may not be actually completed for the city at that time. But that's okay. It's in our next housing element. We're actively working on it. We're demonstrating that. So that's part of what we're doing in this middle packet is demonstrating that we've done these things or we're working on them to make them happen.
Got it. Okay, I, I would support making the recommendation motion, um, but let's see what other commissioners have to say.
Do any other commissioners have comments? Oh, Commissioner Henry, Henry.
You're on mute, Rod.
All right, thank you. Are we to seek public input on this item?
Yes, after the commissioner questions, we should take public comment.
Okay, then I'll wait for the discussion.
Shall we take public comment now, Vice Chair Simons?
Let's do that.
All right, now's the time for public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone. Let me check my email to see if I got any late breaking public speaker cards on this item. I did not. I do not see any raised hands among the attendees. I think it would be appropriate for you to close public comment at this time.
Great, let's close public comment. And do we do a motion or do we take commissioner comments?
Well, I think I would do commissioner comments first, but then as Navar indicated, staff is requesting a motion to recommend that the city council authorize the submittal of this application to the state.
Great, thanks Charlie. Well, let's take comment.
Sure, I would just say it's a kind of no brainer to, to support this and to approve a motion. Clearly, we're well positioned, which is fantastic that we're scoring so highly on strike state criteria. It speaks very highly of the city and overall planning, staff and planning policies. So I think that's great and clearly we should get it and we should support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Moore, would you like to offer? Ooh, the words, not a resolution, whatever, whatever we're looking for.
Motion.
Motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to recommend the city council approval of the resolution to authorize submission.
Seconded.
Was that Commissioner Wax who seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. All right, on that motion, Commissioner Dram.
Aye.
Commissioner Kitzoni.
Aye.
Commissioner Henme.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Wax.
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons.
Aye.
And Chair Chaffe is absent tonight. So six ayes, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. We'll pass your recommendation along to the city council. And you have seven minutes left.
Seven minutes under the timer here. Have a great evening, everybody. Welcome new commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, good night.
So are we adjourned?
Yeah, Commissioner Simons, you have planning commissioner comments and then adjournment. Did we lose him?
I think we lost him.
We did.
Well, it didn't sound like anyone had any comments.
It doesn't. If you do have comments, go ahead right now and then we'll adjourn in his absence.
Additional comments?
I don't want to get everybody all excited to go and then say, well, hold on, I wouldn't like to opine for a while.
Only seven minutes, so yeah.
I just wanted to say welcome to new commissioners.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks.
I guess we are adjourned at 11:24 PM. Thank you, everybody. See you next month.
Have a good night. Bye.